We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge to the life of the United States of America, the good republic over which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, we have invitation for anybody in the audience to schedule time on the agenda that's not already scheduled for discussion. Hearing none, moving to approval of the agenda. Hearing, no objection. We look, oh, wait a minute.
Did you want to take off the one ordinance?
LeAnn.
I would make a motion to remove from the agenda and table the peddler's ordinance.
Wouldn't be tabled, it'd just be removed from the agenda.
Just to remove it from the agenda.
For more rework.
For some rewriting.
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded to remove the peddler's ordinance from the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, okay. Now, without any other objection, is there any other? We'll accept the agenda as written. Number five, the consent agenda, any discussion there before?
On one of the travel requests for Dick and Dan Hoagland, I think there was some cost on that, then they told me, like, I think yesterday or maybe Friday, that there should, probably will be no cost associated with that travel, so.
Okay.
It's an FYI.
And I think we should mention that the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the 421 meeting, the approval of the travel and education requests, the approval of the personnel action notices, and the approval of the cellular allowances, as well as approval of the human services report.
And I do have a correction to the minutes.
Yes.
In the minutes, and it's under, the department had reports, and it was with Sheriff Stanwick was talking about his report, it says at the bottom of that, Pierce asked Stanwick if they should address the airflow in the courthouse basement, wasn't the courthouse basement, it's the basement of the detention center, that's where we've got the airflow issue, not the courthouse.
Okay, thank you. Is that noted, Jenna?
Yes.
Is there any other questions about the consent agenda? Without objection, I will accept the consent agenda with the duly noted on the minutes change and the travel request as noted by Stacy, and we will accept the consent agenda as modified. Okay, approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Krogman, motion second to approve the claims. Any question or discussion on those claims? Vicky, Stacy, you got anything? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor approving the claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Department had reports. Gary, did you want to start us out, or you got your first? Okay. Very good, Joyce.
Good morning, this is going to be so short and sweet. We continue to review Brookings City, it's going very, very well, and pink tags are being left where people are not home and they are responding for appointments, so that's going very well. And Chris and I are working on the abstract, which is all of the county valuation numbers that has to be into Pier by the third Monday in May, and it's almost done, ready to go. Upon that being completed, Vicky will get a copy so she can use those numbers to project for budgets and issues for next year, taxes, so. Any questions?
Hearing none, thank you Joyce.
Thank you.
Well, Mike, you just got comfortable.
Good morning, it's been fairly quiet over at the offices last couple of weeks, mostly just phone calls in and out. With the employment being up pretty well, I'm seeing less people come in on the welfare side. We're still getting a large number of calls, but I guess the number of people that were necessarily helping assist is mostly just in the rents, as you've probably seen by the welfare packet. Hopefully that is kind of going to go down, and has been starting to go down, I haven't had as many calls this week in regards to that particular issue. The number of calls we had coming in, we're 105, made 113 calls, a little bit less on that side, and we had 38 veterans stop in in the last two weeks with 34 for the welfare side of things. A lot of those also were coming in to pay recoveries. And I don't know if I've told you, we do a certain amount of recoveries in our office, we do the, as we, it's mostly all Irene that does the recoveries. People that get assistance from the county for rents, utilities are the two main ones that we get, also for medical, they all get a lien placed against them, and our office does the collection of those fees, I shouldn't say fees, but we collect back the money that the county has given to those that meet the indigent standards. We also collect the money for the state's attorney on the, when a court-appointed attorney is, when someone goes to court and they get a court-appointed attorney, in most cases if they are not, found not guilty, or some reason that the case, the judge probably knows better the reason, but they're actually, they don't go through the whole, they're not found guilty, or the courts decide not to require them to pay it through the clerk of courts, then our office does the collections also on those. So quite a few things we have coming in are probably on the collection side of things. So that's always a good thing, let's put that away.
Okay.
Anyway, as far as on the veteran's side, there's a couple of meetings coming up that I won't be able to attend, my son is graduating from college, and so I'll be having to miss one of them because of that. The other thing that we're looking at is some of the organizations looking a little more, and probably getting a little more involved as far as, you probably all understood the Phoenix, VA in Phoenix having the big problem of the veterans not getting in on time. One of the organizations that I'm a member of is looking at being a little more proactive in working towards that, and it shouldn't really have any effect upon our office, but I'm hoping that, because I can do it off during non-work times, that we might be able to get a little more of an input into that. Okay, any questions? Yes.
Last week, I think it was, when Tyler did its demonstration on a potential new software package that we were looking at, Irene came in and sat through the county lien portion of that, did you have a chance to?
No, I haven't.
I was just curious what your opinion was, it looked pretty impressive, so.
And she hasn't said anything to me, you're probably well aware of, Irene is a grandmama again. She's got two grandsons, and she has gone until tomorrow with the latest addition to their extended families.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, Mike. Vicky's ready to go, we don't have to wait till last this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to kind of give you a recap, in our office, we've got all the taxes for first half collected, we collected over 17 million taxes in the month of April, so we were busy. We are going to be sending out delinquent notices this week, we've gotten the mail, everything's caught up, so we will be sending that out the end of the week. We've been working on budgets in our office, and also, next week, we will be attending the spring workshop in Pier, and Kristen and I and Bev are going out for that, and also Jackie from our office is going to go out for an afternoon and listen to the motor V, all the discussion on motor V, so then she will be there for that. And Kristen and I will be staying on Friday too, because they have a election workshop on Friday, so that is, we're going to be out most of the week next week, so, any questions?
How much did you say we collected in taxes?
Seventeen million.
Seventeen?
Mm-hmm, seventeen, yep.
Anybody else? Any questions? I did get a lot of great comments about our voting machines and how things work.
Good.
City and school board people were very impressed, and the recount people were impressed, and.
Good.
Yeah, it was great to hear.
So that'll be good, we'll have some more training on total vote and all the voting things on Friday, so.
You can't help if people decide to go crazy on the ballot, I mean, you can't.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Sheriff Stanwick.
It's been a busy couple of weeks, about a week and a half ago, we had a fire north of town, and which two deputies got on scene first, and also with the help of a first firefighter that got there, was able to get a person out of the house and so forth, and later down the road, we'll probably do a little award for that, got a letter from the emergency room doctor, she, if they wouldn't have got out of it, when they did, she might not have lived, so it's just lucky that we were close, and was we able to rescue her. The house was a total loss in that fire, and they had to stick around for most of the day and the evening to, with the dry conditions, and just make sure that the house was contained and stuff, so, the rubble, I should say, now. Other than that, we're just extremely busy with complaints with, you know, when nice weather brings speed, it just seems like we're all over the place with speeding complaints and so forth, so we're trying to deal with that. Traffic accidents, we've had a couple of those too and so forth, the jail's been busy. Right now, we got 32 inmates, I got nine in work release, seven females, PBTs, we got 60 participants, so that's 120 to come in during the day to blow. I have 21 on, 26 on SCRAM, so they come in once a week, and then I have three on drug patch, we have one on interlock, so just been a lot of things going on in the jail that's keeping staff there busy. One other thing too, Greg Ince, who's one of my full-time correction officers, just got back to work, he had donated a kidney to his friend's, his best friend's mother, it wasn't his kidney, but he donated a kidney, which then she got a match and stuff, so I thought that's pretty commendable for my correctional officers, he just got back to work, so, pretty proud of him for doing that. I'm kind of attached to my two, I hate to give one up, I'm glad he did, so, other than that, if you have any questions.
I do have, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just think I can say this for the commission as a whole, but if you would extend to the two deputies involved in that incident, our acknowledgement of their, and respect for their quick action, their courage in that situation, in saving that woman's life, that was really remarkable.
Okay, thank you. And the fire department and myself, and the letter from the emergency room doctor, will do a presentation in the near future for that, so.
And my question is along those lines as well, what kind of training do our deputies have in a situation like that, because I know, I mean, they have no equipment to go in, they just went in and did it, and I know that they both had some smoke inhalation, you know, is there, is there any way that they could carry masks or something in their cars that would help them out, I mean, this is, it might be a dumb question, but often we are the first ones on scene.
Yeah, and that's a good question, no, just other than, they all get first responder training, you know, normally, we wait till the fire department gets there, because they have the equipment, but in this particular case, when you have human life in there, then they gotta, we do have some, we do have an instrument that we can break windows and hopefully get through a door and so forth, and so that's what he was able to, and at some point too, you know, he had his, he had his body worn camera on, and I'm going to edit that, and I'm going to probably show that, two, twofold, what that deputy had to go through, and then plus, you know, it shows how we use those body worn cameras, how functional those are, so I'll edit that and stuff, but you're right, I've thought about portable masks, you know, and those types of things, but, you know, it's just one of those things that the fire department, the deputies got there first, you know, normally we'll wait till the fire department gets there, just for the fact is that we don't have the proper equipment, because it's not just masks, it's also the, you know, the coveralls and that, and gloves and all those, those types of things, but this is one of those incidences where they didn't have to actually go into the structure, they had to break out windows till they were able to locate her, and what was, the guardian angel was that she was, the last window the deputy broke, he then saw an arm, and so she was trying to get to that window, she couldn't get out, and so by breaking the window, then that's when all the, all the smoke came out that they took in, because their adrenaline and so they just, and they were able to pull her then out through that window, so we're lucky that we didn't have to enter the structure at that time, but, yeah, that was a question, you know, do I, do I fully dress them, but, you know, the firemen do their thing, and like I say, most of the time, they're there first, or they're there, we, you know, secure the scene and direct traffic, do all those things and not enter the structure, but of course, when you got human life, the first thing to do is to try to save that life.
Well, they are our heroes, and I think the whole board should send their thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Was the call to dispatch, did that come into your office, or did that come in somewhere else?
It came at 911, she was able to call 911 to dispatch.
And so who took that call, was that somebody that's your staff, or is that a different?
That's the police department, yeah, their staff over there, they're the ones, we contract with them to dispatch for us.
Because it's my understanding, the dispatcher told that woman to get as close to a window as possible, which was quick thinking on that dispatcher's part, and that person's probably entitled to some recognition also.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's it, unless you have some other questions. I think we'll talk about, in Stacy's report, my air conditioning issue. Thank you.
Oh, I thought, Sheriff Stanwick?
Yes.
I thought you were additional, I thought it was like a court case, they bring it in at the last second. I do have a couple of questions, okay.
It's the study on your gravel road you want me to do, but I haven't, I haven't looked at it yet, so I gotta look at it.
Well, they haven't started blocking cars yet either. See, I was going to ask you on the news, and I looked in the paper, because I just caught a blurb, and I looked in the paper to find out if the details, but something about 24/7 was being questioned in some states or some, did you see this?
Yeah, they were questioning the fact that they were charging the participants before they were sentenced, and there were some questions, but we wrote the law, we, legislature and Attorney General wrote the law that makes, you know, ours might be questioned too, but we, I think that the way we wrote it is that we're doing it the right way. Their question was, is that they were charging these people to come in before they were actually sentenced, in other words, for bonding and stuff, and our law was wrote, written to, you know, to include that as part of the bond and stuff, so, you know, they may look at ours, but as far as I know, we're okay with how we're doing it. But, so that was the question, that they were, you know, asked to come in and blow before they were sentenced to be on the 24/7 program. So I suppose it had something to do with bonding and those types of things, so, otherwise I've not heard anything from South Dakota on their response, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dick?
Good morning. Well, we're getting into our busy season, if you have been out and about, our overlay work has started on Highway 25, the patching is done before they overlay it, and then we finished crack sealing, and the P rock is almost hauled for chip sealing this summer, finishing culvert installations today, and that will be the final prep for the mill and overlay on Highway 77 going north, which I've not heard when Boz intends to start that, but it shouldn't be too far down the road. And then the box culverts that we're installing on 5 and 7 this summer, originally it was looked at like August or September, but right now, they notified me last week that it looks like they might even be as soon as after the 4th of July, so that's kind of nice to get that done, and if the weather cooperates, it's, they're anticipating that the dry conditions will be advantageous to them, if it, if it isn't, then it'll just be pushed back a little bit, but, and then the week before, when I was at the NACE conference, very good sessions and a lot on renovation of blacktop surfaces and stuff, and I'll touch a little more on that when we get into our planning and whatever. Another thing as far as first responders, they had a very interesting session down there by how public works is somehow drawn into it in most cases as a secondary support type thing, or cleanup, or equipment supplier, or whatever, now they're finding also that with our presence throughout the county and like the DOT throughout the state, it's not unusual that they might be a first person on the scene, and I guess the gist of the whole session dealt with, no longer can you kind of just call somebody else, or expect somebody to show up or whatever, not that you take charge, but you have the ability to recognize the needs and the people that need to be contacted. So I think as one of my safety, monthly safety things, I'm going to be touching on that with our guys that, just to make sure that they're aware of all the emergency numbers and contact numbers for people that could be of assistance if we were the first ones. And then also, last week, I met with Kerry Breck and the Maddoxes out on 213th Street, and I think we ironed out most of the concerns there, and that's moving along, the plans are already at the state DOT getting their approval, and when they come back, he should be pretty much ready to go to bid, so, and I think 34th, I think Scott, I signed some more forms for him last week, I think that's pretty well a go-to whenever Boz gets it in the schedule, so, I think we're looking pretty good, and if the weather holds, hopefully we could get a little rain, but, yeah.
On 34th, is there going to need to be a detour, are they going to close that down for a certain amount of time to do that, or is there always going to be a lane open?
I don't think they'll, not until the late stages, as far as what the plans say, I think we have to close it down, and I'm not sure if they're going to designate a detour, or whether they will just have people use alternate routes.
Okay.
I think that's a great question, if you could follow up with the Boz, and, because if we put undue stress on another township road, I guess we should know that.
Oh, certainly, it's gonna, well, it may do that, but there's a very good chance.
It may or may not, but just if you could find out.
Wasn't the schedule, Dick, they were going to do the north part first?
Mm-hmm, up to the railroad tracks, yeah.
So Everest could come in from the south and then?
Yes. First, okay, other than that, unless you have any questions, you don't?
Hearing none, thank you, Dick. Well, it's 8:55, we've got another five minutes before nine o'clock. We'll move into the action items, regular business. Item A is action to approve letter of intent with Minnehon County Juvenile Detention Center.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any question or discussion after our presentation last time? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item B, action to approve letter of support for the awarding of a United States Department of Transportation Tiger 7 grant to the South Dakota Freight Capacity Expansion Project.
So moved.
Moved. Moved by Krogman, seconded by Miller. Any question or discussion on this letter of support? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. For people that haven't read it, it has to do with improving the situation in South Dakota, moving grain and having more sides. Item C, action to approve patometry flyover, tabled from the last meeting, I need a motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
Moved and seconded, remove it from the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, and it's now open for discussion.
I believe the reason that we were holding off on this was because we weren't sure who our partners were going to be, and we still don't have all of those nailed down, but the city will be our partner, and I think, you know, in my opinion, we need this for updated data, and I think that even knowing just the city will go with us on this, we should be able to go ahead, the only other, probably E-911 will not, there's a possibility that BMU will, but we don't know yet, so it's not going to be that much difference, and I think we should go ahead and schedule our flyover, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Stacy, your commissioners, do you have any comments concerning this?
I guess just the valid, for Joyce's use, I mean, it's well worth, just for Joyce in her office, if we don't do this, I don't know, that would hinder you in further, see what?
We use this on a daily basis, many, many times, for our office, and I think there's other offices that also use it, so, and I know Marty's been looking at it, and the police have been looking at it, and so, and the income, Stacy, did you give them some type of report or answers to their questions?
Yes, there was a staff report on that.
Okay, because the income that comes from our Beacon website is substantial also to help offset some of these costs, so.
The point is, we're probably going to do it, even if it's only the city that goes with us, so I see no reason to hold off, I mean, we need the updated data.
Any other question or discussion? This is a tabled motion from last time to approve. If there isn't any more question or discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. One more minute, I bet it'll take them a minute to walk up here, we have Jason Merkley and Barb. Barbara Anderson, I almost called you something else. I've known Barbara for a long time, so, not quite with it, I may be using your facility shortly.
Uh-oh.
Well, take it away, I see you have many board members too, you can introduce them.
Yes. Roberta Olson is the chair of the Brookings Health System Foundation Board, Dr. Bruce Lushbaugh is our secretary treasurer of the Health System Foundation Board, Walt Walshy is with the Brookings Health System Board of Trustees, and I'll introduce myself, Barb Anderson, Brookings Health System Foundation Development Officer. Officer.
Good morning, Commissioners and others. Jason Merkley, President and CEO of Brookings Health System.
Well, thank you for having us on the agenda today. We have an exciting project to talk to about, exciting for the whole county and the surrounding area of Brookings. And that is the renovation and expansion of our 50-year-old hospital that's been taking care of the Brookings area for many years. And it's time, as we'll find out, as we go through our presentation today, now is the right time to expand and renovate that facility. So we do have some slides, I think, that you all have copies of them. It's all right. Great, thank you. So what you see here is an image of what the updated facility will look like. Imagine yourself standing on 22nd Avenue, looking to the northeast. The main entrance to the facility will remain approximately where it is today, but as you can see, the facility will have a whole new look, more inviting, more up-to-date, more indicative of the quality of care that you receive when you come inside the facility. A quick overview of the timeline, we'll step back through, back in 1907, next slide, was when the first hospital was built, and that was over on Harvey Dunn. And that was a project where two businesspeople in the community, Horace Fishback Senior and George Sexhour, came together and said, we'll help fund a new facility. And they worked with a couple of the physicians that were in town at the time. And that building is still standing. We know it as West Hall today. A few of you might have had an office in there before. I know Keith Corbett has office there today, and he talks about how there were people actually born in his office. So that's a very important historic history for our hospital. Now, in 1935 is when the hospital was purchased by the city of Brookings. And a few years later, the hospital that we know today, the majority of that facility that we see there today was built on 22nd Avenue. That project, that was about a $1.3 million project. And that project was funded in part by the county, Brookings County, who did a bond issue of around $290-some thousand dollars. The city did a bond issue of around $300,000 to help pay for that, plus they transferred another $97,000 into the project. We had also Hill Burton financed, that was a federal grant available at the time, for around $640,000. And we had some donations of around $3,600, private donations. So you can see, looking back, that the current hospital facility that we see was a joint project using both county and city and private funds. Later, as time went by, the Board of Trustees put together a master campus plan, a vision for what we need moving forward. And in 2011, the first phase of that plan was completed. That was the new emergency department and lab that we enjoy today. A couple of years ago, the second phase of that master campus plan, the Neighborhoods at Brookview, was completed. And I think we've all seen how that really opened the eyes of people in our county, our community, regarding what you can do when you look forward and look at new ideas for how to provide health care for our community. Currently, what we're in is the final phase of that master campus plan, and that is the hospital expansion and renovation that we're talking about today. So some things to keep in mind, the three main reasons why we are here today, and why now is the right time to expand the hospital facility, is since 1964, the community has grown. The county has increased in population by 60%. So we have many, many more people to serve in our county. Healthcare has changed. If you look at the types of services provided when the facility was built 50 years ago, the majority of surgeries, for example, were inpatient. Most of the procedures that you would have back then, you were in the hospital for five, six, seven days as an inpatient. Now, it's just the opposite. The majority of procedures that we have are outpatient basis, where you're in and out more than likely in the same day. Patient expectations have changed as well in the last 50 years. Today, we really demand privacy. We want our own private room. We want the ability to move around within the facility with relative privacy, and we want space for our families to be with us in our room. So the facility built 50 years ago was great at the time, but it really does not meet these needs, and the current proposed facility will meet those needs. Just some quick facts to reiterate, we are an independent health system. We are the Brookings Health System, but we are owned by the city, but we are a system. We also own the White Clinic, the Volga Clinic, the Arlington Clinic, Yorkshire Eye Clinic, Brookview, excuse me, Neighborhoods at Brookview, as well as the ambulance service that serves the county and beyond, or the city and throughout the county. So that is an independent health system, thus the change from what was used, what used to be called Brookings Hospital, is now Brookings Health System. The focus is on quality care. So regardless what the facility looks like, or what age it is, the focus within the walls are top-quality care. And that is evidenced by the fact that recently, we were placed number two in the state, behind Avera Heart Hospital, in terms of the quality care, a number of quality benchmarks were used. And we came in second only by 0.01%. So that's pretty honorable to know that our health facility right here in Brookings is the second to the top in the state, and virtually right along with that top-ranked facility. On the national level, we're constantly ranked as well. A recent survey done of 4,300 hospitals across the country put us in the top 500. So we can be assured that there is quality care going on at Brookings Health System. We are self-supported. We're nonprofit. Self-supported means we need to operate using the revenues we generate ourselves. We want to make it clear, we do not, on an ongoing basis, receive any tax money from either city or county for operating the health system. We give back, last year, there was about $400,000 approved for charity care. We recently did an economic impact study showing that $27 million a year is generated by having the health system here in Brookings County. And that was based on 2010 numbers, so we believe it's probably over $30 million a year now. And it's important to note, we do serve the entire county and then some. We are a regional health system. So just some quick facts to get everybody up to the same speed. The next slide shows that service area. So you can see with the oval shape, that is the area where our patients come from, including the entire county of Brookings County. And the snowflakes there show you those facilities I mentioned before, that are owned by Brookings Health System, which include White, Volga, and Arlington Clinics.
Just a brief overview of the project that we are planning, and have been planning over the past multiple months. The site plan is up there in front of you, and as you can see, the existing hospital really sits in the middle of the of the site plan there. We are doing some remodeling within the building after we get our new expansions on both the west and the east side completed. The west side, northwest side there, is really a two-level medical office building. And what medical office building means is really it will house physicians that are on our medical staff. And so Avera has already committed to vacating, or getting into the first floor of that building, vacating some of the space out of their existing clinic, and allowing them to do some remodeling within that clinic in the future. And so the first floor will be really filled up with some specialists, more hospital-based specialists, that are part of our medical group. Second floor will really have space for future expansion of our medical staff. The green bar there that sits in the front, kind of on the, right off our front entry, is really our new lobby area that we'll be developing, which you see on the glass of the front cover of what we just went through. And then we're doing a little bit of changes on our site. So as you can see, our main entrance, we are attempting to come off of the Third Street Light, which we have some safety issues getting in and out of our facility today. And so we're trying to clear those up as we also work towards redeveloping and expanding our services. We're very hopeful that, and our plan shows, that we'll get off that Third Street Light, so we'll have a more safe, safer entrance in and out of the facility. And then off to the big expansion of about 65,000, 66,000 square feet, is a two-story hospital addition over on the east side where Brookview Manor used to be. And that is kind of the darker green, tanned color up there on the on the on the screen. And that, on the first level, will have same-day surgery, so it'll have our operating rooms and same-day prep and recovery rooms. So when you come into our facility and you need your colonoscopy, for example, you would check in back there on that east side, you would go right into your prep room for your colonoscopy, back to the OR, up to recovery, and then out the door. So very nice flow. In addition to that, we have located all of our imaging right in that same area next to our emergency room. And so we have lots of folks that need imaging when they come in from an emergency basis. And so imaging will be right up front there on that southeast expansion also. So we'll have our MRI unit inside, or CT, RAD, floral, and general RAD, and ultrasound all in one area, which would be really nice for that department. Up above, on the second floor, will be our patient care unit. So it'll have our obstetrics unit, a new obstetrics unit, new medical surgical unit, and then pharmacy is also relocating there. So we're going with about the same number of rooms that we have today, and so we're not expanding our bed status. We'll still be licensed, 49-bed facility. Actually, you'll probably only be able to find, they're all private rooms, you'll probably only be able to find about 30 rooms or so up there, which is about all you could probably find in the current facility. And so what we're doing is just kind of creating more of an atmosphere that, again, as Barb mentioned, allows for the privacy, family to come visit them, areas for them to be part of that care, and then also allow more confidentiality within the transportation of those patients as they go up and down for services, whether that's down to the OR, or whether that's over to imaging, or wherever they may come from in order to get up on the floor. So lots of amenities, I'll call them, that we currently don't have. The cost estimate for the new expansion and renovation is up there. As you can see, the 86,000 is in new square feet, that includes the medical office building along with, medical office building's about 25,000 square feet, along with the the expansion on the east side. And then we're coming back in as we vacate our operating room and our imaging area. That does leave a hole in our, in the middle of our facility, which we will then renovate and bring back in some administrative services that today are off-campus. Barb, as one, resides over in the Yorkshire Plaza. And having those folks all on campus, along with our business office and medical health information, would be very nice for our facility. And it obviously creates a more team-oriented environment. So you can see, the construction's just shy of $36 million. We have some FF&amp;E equipment, furnitures, and fixtures of around $7 million. We have a little contingency built in there today, and obviously some financing costs and interest associated with the borrowing that we have. So we're right around that $46 million. That is a target that we're still shooting for. Just going over the cost estimate with the construction manager at risk company, Kraus Anderson here, last week, we have some work to do, as we always do on building projects. So everybody dreams big, and then we gotta bring it back down to reality here. So we're a little over budget, but we'll certainly get back to that targeted figure. Our funding on the next slide is, as you can see, made up of capital financing, which is the 70% category. So if you roughly, I'll just say 30 million, a little over 30 million is what we're going out to the market for, from a borrowing standpoint, through the hospital and through the city. We have 20% in hospital contribution or hospital reserves that we built up over the life of the facility, that are really purposed and used for this type of project. That's what they're there for. This is what we need to use them for. And so roughly about $10 million, looking at that from a standpoint of the hospital contribution. We do have certain reserves that we need to keep in order to borrow the 70%. There are contingencies associated with that. And so we have a certain amount of days cash on hand and other benchmarks that the folks that we borrow the money from want to make sure that we have within the operations of the facility. And so we have done a debt capacity study with Ida Bailey, gone through all of this information. We can, we've determined the level of debt that we can service within our organization. We today have about $10 million in debt from the long-term care facility, from the Neighborhoods at Brookview, that we're carrying today. It's just shy of $9, $9.5 million, actually. So as we're paying that down, that's obviously debt on top of what we're going to be seeing at the hospital. So those two combined, we've done, again, a study with Ida Bailey, to feel very comfortable that, given the existing operation, so not taking into account any any increase in revenue that the new project may bring to us, we feel very comfortable that we can service this debt and and move us forward for quite some time. And then the 10% is really the community campaign, that the reason we're here in front of you all from a county perspective, and what we're doing out in the community. And so I'm gonna let Barb talk a little bit about what we've done so far in preparation of this and where we're at today.
Thanks, Jason. So since January, we've had the opportunity to meet with nearly 200 people to talk about the project and get input. We also hired a consultant who is experienced in capital campaigns for health care facilities. And they interviewed 29 people, one-on-one, within the community as well. So the information we gathered from those meetings with 200-some folks, as well as those independent interviews, we came to the conclusion that the appropriate goal for a capital campaign for our community, based on input from those that we talked to, was 4.6 million. In other words, 10% of the total project. We have, Jason and I have begun calling on some of our top donors in the community. We are happy to announce that we do have a pledge from a private entity of $1 million. So we're well on our way. We also are here to ask you to consider contributing to that 10% goal of 4.6 million as well. And we'd like to ask the county to consider $1 million as a contribution to the project. Now, the timeframe for contributions can be across three to five years. We'll leave that up to you to discuss. But we believe that's an appropriate amount to request from the county, again, based on the amount of services that are provided to county residents, as well as historical look at how the county has been involved in one-time building projects for the health system in the past. At this point, I think we'll just leave it up to you for some questions. Well, I did hand out an updated flyer, and I apologize, these are not available from the printer yet. I printed these on our copy machine, so yeah, they're a little bit odd. But that does show you the current scale of giving and information about the capital campaign. Also, you have an executive summary of the report that was made by our consultant.
Well, thank you for coming over and the presentation and everything. I've had the opportunity to see this multiple times since I'm an ex-fish you on the board, so I thought I would throw my two cents in here. So very, you know, nice presentation, obviously well thought out, and using the abilities of professionals like the Renaissance Group and those to get their input in to validate what we're doing. You know, it's needed. It's absolutely needed. In my business, as a real estate broker and taking people around, one of the best things about Brookings, Brookings County, is is how we look, and the schools, and the, our roads, and our trees, and how nice they are and everything. People feel comfortable, and that attracts people. And I think this is a part of it, too, because when people come to Brookings, they're looking at schools with their children, they're looking at health care, and they're looking at that. And this is another investment that I think is very important to our community, and very important to our county. And I do appreciate the ability to branch out to their other smaller communities and have outreach clinics that will allow that that ability. And then if they need to come to the Brookings Hospital for a procedure, this new facility will make them feel more comfortable. this new facility will make them feel more comfortable. Their family members feel more comfortable, and their residents feel more comfortable. So, you know, this is our hospital. This is Brookings Hospital. We need to invest in it. And so, you know, it's an important thing. So I like the idea. I think it's needed. I think it's timeful. The other thing I really like about it is the fact that we're not just building a hospital, but you're building better care. And you can see that by the stats. Your care, you know, you can put a nicer hospital up there, but if you go into the hospital and don't get good care, that's word of mouth, and that's not good. And I think you guys have done an incredible job building better care, better responses, and great. You know, you can see with, with all the awards coming out and the care awards and people coming out and giving their testimonies of how, you know, I went in there and didn't know what to expect, and I came out and it was awesome. And so if we're gonna invest in that type of thing for the building, we need you to hold, continue to hold up what you're doing and continue to do that and to make it profitable. And I think you have. And we'll look at our numbers this last year of the Legacy. Made a very nice profit this last year. And, and you guys are doing a great job in there. So, you know, I'm certainly willing to invest. You know, I don't know the number yet or anything like that. But I think it'd be an investment to our county and our community and to our citizens, definitely. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Krogman. Anybody else have a comment? Yes.
Again, I sat through the presentation last night. So I, I heard it yesterday. And, and I previously served in the hospital board for eight years. And I, and I do believe that this is something that the county needs to contribute to. And I agree with Commissioner Krogman. We'll have to discuss how much and when and all of those kinds of things. But I certainly am in favor of the county making a contribution to this project.
I also had a chance to sit down with Barb, and she explained everything to me. And I think it's a very well, worthwhile project. Looks like it's put together well.
We have to find the money. That's the bottom line.
I think the level of care in the last ten years has really taken off. But if you do this, I'm gonna really, you know, I love the outdoors. That walk to the MRI, MRI machine. I did that twice. Really woke me up. But they're right. As, as we are moving forward in our strategic plan and our budgeting process, all coming to a head here. And we're looking at the mandated needs of our county currently. And obviously, health is one. And there's other ways to take care of it other than just outright digging in. You know, there is bond. That's the way the county did years ago. And I'm not saying I'm proponent of that. But I think we'll look at all the different avenues and give what we can for our taxpayers and our whole county. Because it, it's different than it was in whatever sixty. And it was fun reading the history, Chuck Cecil, and then Barb passed on some more. Like history, I guess. And it's very different today than it was then. And I think that most people in the county would see the value of having it here in Brookings and so close to them. So with that, is there a timeline for this, when you wanna hear from us?
Well, we are anticipating groundbreaking in late July. So it would be great to, if we could, our goal is to try and reach at least eighty to ninety percent of our goal before then. So I, you know, I understand you have your budgeting timeframe, so you can't really change that. But, yeah, our effort will be to be out in the community, raising the rest of the funds to reach our goal between now and the middle of July.
Okay, well, in June, it's the fifteenth, sixteenth, and thirtieth right now is our, our taskmaster has got a schedule for, Vicky. And so we'll have some inclination, I guess.
And Barb and I have had discussions, and I think they've got the information on what to submit, that we need them to submit to us, too, to be considered for budget talks here in the next couple months.
Thank you very much, commissioners. We appreciate the time. Just a reminder, we, our emergency is, our room is open twenty-four-seven. You don't look like you're doing too well.
Yeah, thanks. Dr. Lushbaugh could hang back for a little bit during the break. Set up a triage out there. Thank you. Okay, back to business. Item D, action to approve an abatement number twenty-fifteen dash zero-zero-six. Request made by advance for parcel four-zero-six-five-five dash a lot of zeros dash zero-zero-two dash zero-zero and the amount of three, three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
Move approval.
Second.
Pierce Miller, any question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Action to approve abatement number twenty-fifteen dash zero-seven. A quest made by the finance officer, Vicky Buesse, for Vanderbilt Mortgage and Finance. Parcel number two-two-nine-nine-five-zero-zero-zero-four dash four-zero-nine dash zero-zero and the amount of six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Krogman, Miller, discussion, questions? Okay, none? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Action to approve, F. Action to approve resolution number fifteen dash twenty-nine. Resolution authorizing the purchase of bridge construction labor based on the price established through the county of Spink, South Dakota bid process.
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Krogman, question, discussion? Dick, did you want to say anything?
Dick, is this on hourly rate, then?
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. G, first reading of ordinance establishing requirements, fees, and regulations for the issuance of alcoholic beverage licenses within Brookings County.
Move approval.
Second. Pierce Jensen? Oh, yes. Did I say the first reading? Yes. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
Action taken today is just the first reading today.
So it's the first reading. And it's rather a long ordinance, and we'll be taking time to read it, I think. As we move forward, if you have any questions, you can address them to Deputy State's Attorney Abby Howard or Leanne Pierce or myself. And, okay. And the first reading of ordinance number twenty-fifteen dash zero-two, an ordinance established forty miles per hour limit on a portion of County Road twenty-three. And that is for a half-mile or a quarter-mile.
I have, I know we're not taking action, but I do have a question on that. Because I was under the impression we were gonna do it a half-mile out, but the ordinance said three-quarters of a mile.
We just had to match what was on the north, coming from the north, going south. So it was, that was our interpretation, too. It'd be about a half-mile. But when you look at the official distance, we made it at three-quarters.
Question, Dick, why do we have to match it?
Yeah.
The continuity and also for, in the MUTCD manual, if you regulate it from one direction and it's a straight-through shot, it only makes sense to mirror it on the south side.
Well, I, I didn't write the manual or anything or anything about the manual. But my, my thought would be is I understand why they did the forty-five out there because where the ethanol plant is and the truck's slowing down, we need to get people slowed down and be prepared to turn. Where there, there's just really not anything there for, to prepare to turn down. I mean, are we out of compliance for federal funds if we would go outside the manual and make it a half-mile? Or?
If, if I understand it right, and maybe Abby could clarify clearer, but it's in our jurisdiction, and we can determine what we wanna do. But you're far better probably to use the guidelines of the MCD, ECD manual, than you are to just go off and set your own standard, so to speak.
And having adjudicated speeding tickets for twenty-two years, I want to tell you, one of the hardest things for the citizens is if you have one speed limit going this way and another one going that way, people get confused, and there are a lot of tickets, and it, and it's an enforcement issue. I think Marty might have an opinion on that, but it should be the same going both ways.
And we do have ag first on the south side of town there. A large amount of trucks going into ag first.
Well, I guess if there remains to be question, we have opportunity at the next reading to make any adjustments. And then I was removed from this meeting. J, request to fill vacancy, part-time administrative assistant in the WIC office.
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Krogman, any question or discussion on this position? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, K, request to fill vacancy, truck driver, split position between highway and weed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Miller, Krogman, any question or discussion?
Did Dick, you submit this, or did Gary?
At this time, is it, is it working out? I mean, sometimes when we have new positions available, we look and to try to make sure if there's a issue or something's not working out, we kinda get that changed before we do that. Is everything working out for both of you?
It's a little preliminary for me. This year, we didn't have much snow. So it, it was kind of a welcome, but yet not as necessary as, as it could be. And then now with the change in leadership in that department, that'll leave another void. So the immediate need would definitely be with Gary and Misty. And the eventual need would come through me.
I think we also talked about before that if need be, Dick, if during seal coating or whatever, you needed extra help, that this person would be able to transfer over to highway to help.
Correct, because they're licensed for our requirements, and that covers them in the spraying part.
Okay, any other question or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. L, request to fill vacancy, office manager, county development.
Second.
Miller, Pierce, question or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Commission Department Director Report. Stacy, please, did you wanna do it there or down there? You could choose.
Why don't I stay here, then I can run the computer, too, a little bit here. My report was included in your packet. There was a letter that you received from a concerned citizen regarding the new township signage. It's in here.
Stacy, was that not signed?
No, it was not. The envelope was not.
Oh, it was a nice letter, and I'd like to respond. But one time the city had a policy, anytime they received an anonymous letter, it wasn't entered in record or anything. I'm just saying that's the way they did it. It was a nice letter, you know. I guess I encourage all citizens to sign their name. It's okay.
Absolutely, because, you know, we could give some explanations for some of the things that have happened there. But without a name, we have no, no way to do that.
Years ago, the newspaper wanted to do anonymous letters, the editor. And there were some wild ones. And I said, you know, that didn't work well for Declaration of Independence. Those people were willing to put on their name, and that's by our living in a democracy.
The next, as we see, we, we received the agenda for the Sioux Valley Commissioners Association meeting. The eight-county, next eight-county meeting coming up on May eighteenth. I need to know who is planning to go, so I can RSVP. Everyone? Larry, are you gonna go?
Larry, are you going?
Are you gonna go? Yes.
I don't know. I think four of them may be dead by then.
Just to give you a heads-up, too, I think I'm going to send Laura in my place for that meeting. Todd Kayes with First District is going to be there giving some, giving out some information on the wage study that the planning districts put together. That day happens to be field day for my kids, so I'm, I'm needed there. But I'm gonna send Laura so she can hear what Todd has to say. We received a certificate of liability insurance for both for the Thirty-Fourth Avenue project. As I just mentioned, the planning districts, their wage survey is done and complete. And so we can, and Todd will be presenting on that on, on May eighteenth. Laura and I haven't had a chance yet to really go through and look at those results, but we will be doing that here shortly. I included some information from Certified Languages International. It's a call line that our departments could use if an instance ever came up that an interpreter would be needed for any of our departments. I visited with, actually Jenny Hammer with the, in the, with the courts. She gave me this information, passed that along. Doesn't, there's no setup costs or no monthly charges. It's a dollar forty-five per minute. We just have to get kind of an account set up with them. And if you direct me to, I can sure do that.
How necessary is that?
When I had the discussion with most department heads, it wasn't something that they needed very often. There are times when there are individuals that come in. Oftentimes, they have someone with them who interprets for them, whether it be a child or a spouse. There, there are rare occasions, though, where people come in and there is a language barrier. So this would help.
So there's no cost unless we actually use it?
That is my understanding, yes. They say no annual fees, no setup costs. It's a dollar forty-five per minute once you get connected to the interpreter.
And I think as we continue with economic development in Brookings County, and we have more people that do not necessarily use English, that we should have a resource available for our employees and that we can use that in a judicious manner, so as not to spend a lot of money. But sometimes we need to have something that gives us an opportunity to be able to communicate with people. I've used this program. It's a good program. They, they respond very quickly. You dial the phone number. Somebody says, what language are you looking for? They ask you for your county code number, and you have an interpreter on the line within just two or three minutes. They have somebody online that can interpret for you.
So how it works is somebody comes into finance office. We got a real language problem. Rather than spend ten minutes of our employees' time, you call this number.
You call this number.
And on a phone, and are you handing this phone back and forth?
No, you should have a speaker phone. Is that a problem for our departments? You just put it on speaker.
Oh, you just put on speaker phone? Okay, so then, and that's, well, I think it'd be time-saving, actually, for the rare time for a dollar forty-five.
You know, you get that Polish-speaking person that wants to get a driver's license, and they don't have somebody to help them. That would save a whole heck of a lot of time. And if, if we decide to adopt this, this policy, we should have some procedures for our employees to, what they need to do in advance so that, to cut down the number of minutes that you're on the line, which would be to have whatever forms you need right there and available so that you can be explaining those to the interpreter, and the interpreter explains them to them. But...
Sure.
Well, I like this pricing on this. We had something similar at the sheriff's office for a while, but it was a lot more costly, and I had to have a annual fee. And so I dropped that program. But, you know, so far, we've been lucky. It's been usually, Spanish has been there. You know, I have four or five that are on call for us. So this would be a benefit for us out in the field also because, you know, as our population is changing, we're seeing other languages becoming more popular in, in Brookings. So I could see this as, especially if there's no setup costs. The other one costs us a yearly... could see this as, especially if there's no setup costs. The other one costs us a yearly fee, and it was quite expensive per minute, you know. So I like this. This seems like it'd be okay.
And I like the amount of languages that are available to us. I mean, because with, you know, our SDSU expanding and the, you know, the grad students that are coming in from all over, you know, it would certainly be helpful that way, too, along with labor and professionals that are coming in from, taking jobs and coming from all over. So I think it's definitely, it may not be that bad, but I think we could be proactive, have something in place there, and get used to it, and be able to have our employees get used to it that need it, that when it does become a regular occurrence, that it's not trying to learn something new. Especially if we're not paying a yearly fee and not using it. I think that's the important part, one of the important parts.
And the minutes don't start accruing until they have the interpreter on the line.
Okay, I think the procedure, though, needs to get worked on. Is that something we're gonna put on Stacy, or?
I think so, and I'd be happy to work with you on that if you'd like.
Yeah.
Because I've used maybe three of these different systems quite a bit, and would have some ideas.
Yeah, and I've got the information to sign up for an account already, so I think, you know, I've got this contact. And any questions that we have, she's been very, very good about getting back to me, so.
Thank you.
State reimbursement rates will be changing July 1. Actually, there was one thing that already changed as of January 1. Back at the first meeting of each year, we pass a resolution that sets our per diem, and it basically says that we follow state rates. There's the resolution, and then the changes. The ones that are most common are the mileage is forty-two cents, up from thirty-seven cents. And then the meals are changing, in-state per diem. It was five, nine, and twelve. I think it's gonna be six, eleven, and fifteen now, as of July 1. So I just wanted to make you aware of those changes. The air conditioner over at the sheriff's office, it was last Thursday, I believe, went out. The compressor is basically shot on it. A new unit, we've gotten a quote from Johnson Controls on a new unit. To fix the old one, I don't know that we want to go that route. That, the one that is, went out, has been giving, caused some issues in the last couple summers, hasn't worked, hasn't worked exactly how we needed it to. Then we've had some issues. Actually, it'd take longer to get parts and fix this one than it would to order a new one and have it installed. Obviously, this wasn't in, we take it out of county building budget. It's not budgeted for this year. We didn't plan on this going out. So I don't know if Marty can add anything else to the discussion?
No, you did good. It's just, the problem is, I can't open any windows over there. So it's lucky it's May and not August, but Saturday, it was extremely hot in there. You know, we had fans and stuff, so it's nice that it went out now than in August, but...
And you said this service is the work release portion of the jail?
Yes, and that's where I have a lot of people in one area, so. It smells like a gym room up there most of the time.
I guess we're just kind of looking for direction. If you want us to go forward with what you want us to do moving forward. Obviously, we're gonna be looking at using some contingency if we purchase something new, probably if we fix it, either way.
I don't see any point in fixing it, because I think we'll just be back in the same position in a short period of time. So I think probably we should look at purchasing a new one.
Is this something, Marty, you want to get some quotes from some different companies, or we stay with Johnson Controls, or?
I guess that'd be up to you if you want to, but I'm happy with Johnson Control. Then it, then, the problem was, this wasn't their unit either, but they still was under their maintenance to look at it. And so, you know, I trust Johnson Control, I guess. I don't have an issue with not getting other quotes, but that is up to the commission. The problem I got is, is just the time. You know, they have one on hand, of course, and it could be done in, I think, seven days or eight days, 10 days.
I was sort of thinking along Commissioner Jensen's line. I know it's a problem when you got Johnson Controls is overseeing the total operation, but many times, I actually didn't know they sold equipment. I thought they were primarily a coordinator of zoning and everything, and you bought your equipment from Testiers or some commercial-grade facility. And then they just provided, but I could see them looking at it and saying, it's not working because we didn't put it in. You know, you go he said, she said kind of thing, and that never have it running right. But I'm just wondering how close in the ballpark they are with another commercial-grade unit. But maybe I'm the only one that's...
I don't know. I don't question that. That's a lot less than I thought it would be. And they do take care of all of this building. You know, I think, I don't know. It's fine to get bids, but I feel like when we already have them on board with everything else that we have, we should continue to use them. But, you know, if you, if the commission feels that they need to take bids, I think it was a lot less than what I had anticipated it would be.
Well, you know, I don't know what, you know, I haven't maybe any idea, not been involved in the commercial costs of these. I see exactly your guys' point there on that type of stuff, too, but I also see the ability that if we get bids and we have to wait to approve this in our next meeting, two weeks later, and then it's another week to be installed, that we have 30 days sitting here without AC there. It's uncomfortable, not life-threatening, but, you know, I don't know. It's a tough call on whether we do it because of speed and that, or is it because we need to just check it out to make sure they're actually giving us the thing? One thing that does concern me, though, is getting a bid from somebody else, somebody putting a machine that's not what, you know, that fits good there, and these two are fighting back and forth, and Johnson's trying to figure out, and it costs us more money in the long run than it does to have somebody that's consistent and can fix their own machines and that kind of stuff. So I'm leaning towards, let's get it done. You know, let's get the thing done here, hopefully can get it done seven to eight days, and that, and we're not, you know, that they're in the ballpark, they're not taking advantage of us, I guess. We put it this way, we've got a lot of, I mean, with this building, Johnson Controls is here. We have a lot of contracts with them. My gut tells me they're not taking advantage of us, but I can't, don't know for sure.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
Okay. Looks like we got a consensus.
Okay, Marty and I'll work together and move it along.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll object when we see the bill. No.
County Development Director Robert Hill isn't, obviously isn't here today, but he asked that I provide you with some of the latest drought information. So that is included in your packet as well, for you to take a look at. Just some upcoming dates also on my report again. May 18th, the commissioners' meeting. And then we have our budget hearing date set for June 15th, 16th, and then a review date if needed on June 30th. Few other things that came up since we published this, since we published my report. We need some direction on where we want us to go with the Promotion and Expansion Committee and appointing county members to that board. We actually received an application now, obviously after the deadline, but I didn't know how you wanted Sonia and I to proceed with filling those two positions.
Commissioners, particularly a couple of them that are very close to that?
Any more applications, just?
Just one.
And I believe she's on the committee currently. Is there any, I guess, if Sonia had any recommendations for people, or?
I'm not sure. She just sent me this just the other day. I mean, I can touch base with her again and see if there are other names. If you want us to advertise this again, we can.
We have an application, albeit it's after the deadline, but I don't see any, I don't think it's prudent of us to put more money into advertising again. When we do have an application, somebody wants to be on it. I think we should accept the app.
The one?
But we still need one more.
Yeah.
Oh, we still need another?
We still need another position. And if that's the case, I can bring that application forward at the next meeting for approval.
Yeah.
But we would still have one more position that would need to be filled.
And I think we should advertise that position. And I should have brought this along, and I didn't think of it. My question on how we advertise that, I've got more information on that.
Okay.
Okay. And our wording isn't quite right, and I think it's limited. It limits who can be on that board. And that's pretty important right now with promoting 4H. We want to, I think, be sure we've got that board filled with people that have an interest in maybe some dynamics and getting things done. And I just think we should re-advertise it and look at, I actually have, and it was sent to me, the language that came, it's SDSU Extension Language. It is not required by the federal government, how we've got that. That's just a requirement South Dakota has, not any other state. But I've got all that stuff at my office. I didn't think to bring it. But could we run the ad again?
Just for the one position?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
My thought is to find ads. I just can't believe that you can't work in the network of 4H and have them find within that group.
I'm sure Sonia probably could find somebody if we directed her to do so.
Yeah, I mean, she, when she was here, I think we asked if she could email the volunteers and people in the organization. I think, is the one, one of them's open? You're not supposed to be in 4H, is that?
The confusion we had, we have non-4H teens and adults, but the ag producers designated by county commissioners. That's where, why it was brought towards the board.
Okay, thank you.
This is the, this is the breakdown here.
Right. And being that it said designated by county commission, that's why.
In the actual, and I'm sorry, I don't have that here, but the actual wording, it doesn't have to be an ag producer. It has to be somebody involved in agriculture.
Right, correct.
I just think we need to clean up our wording, run our ad. I don't think, I don't think we should go trolling for somebody to fill the position without re-advertising it, and then saying, we can say to Sonia, if you see some people, have them apply according to what's in the ad.
I don't think the wording is gonna make that much difference.
Yeah. I was wondering, in the past, is, and is it okay that if you're on the extension board, you're on this, too? Seems like it's kind of a, why have two if you're having the same people? You just stay right there, and then, oh, convenience, we're gonna do this, we made up our, I mean, I'm not sure. I've never been to one, so.
It's nice to have someone from Promotion and Expansion on the extension board as well, for continuity, and then we are informed as to what's going on in Promotion and Expansion.
But not totally made up of?
No, not totally.
I'm the only representative on there.
Yeah, right. Okay, so who do we end up with? We're gonna advertise one position?
We're gonna advertise one position, and then we'll bring forward the application at the next, the May 19th meeting, for approval. Okay.
If no applications are received?
We'll cross our fingers.
Sonia bring her rep.
Yeah, we'll deal with that when that time comes again. I know Larry had asked me at the last meeting, there was some discussion to look into the ex officio versus a voting member of the beta board. And I went back into the minutes and found it. It was back in 2010. There was, it was when former Commissioner Sanamo was on beta, on the beta board. However, no action was really taken, so the discussion on that in the minutes wasn't helpful. So, and I visited with her as well to see if she could recall, and she really couldn't either. So it was five years ago, so I think, moving forward, I guess I would just leave it up to the current board to make a decision if that's something, if Beta makes that request official of us to have the commission member, a voting member rather than ex officio.
Well, the boards I've been on, and of course, I never participated till I was on the commission, the first thing I got was their bylaws. And that's where I got my direction, is what my position was, whether it was voting or ex-official, or, that's where I got my direction. I mean, if they have a set of bylaws, we're not in a position to tell them we're sending in a voter or an ex-official. We can discuss with them, especially if we're giving them money, that we want something changed. But that's the first thing I checked, is with Beta's bylaws or charter of organization, and how you're listed. Am I following what you're saying? Because that's what I've done in everyone that I've been on.
Right. And as, as sitting in the meeting last, the last meeting we had, I had participated in a motion, and I was informed I was not a voting member, so. But they extended the invitation that if I wanted to be a voting member, that it would be up to the commission to decide if they wanted me to be. I was welcome to be a voting member, being as we participate in the financial.
For sure, should look to their bylaws, because as an organization, because it may change, require a change of their bylaws to do it, whether it be beta, growth partnership, e-central, mental health, the housing deal, whatever, I guess. I would ask them to give you a copy, or look at it themselves, and then go from there. That'd be my advice, other commissioners.
That may happen on domestic use as well, because they've talked about making me a voting member, and it is a change in the bylaws to be able to do that.
Is that your second item, or you have?
I have just a few more things.
Oh, oh.
I handed out some information from the DOT on grants this morning. That was in front of you. You should have all received an email yesterday from City Manager Jeff Weldon regarding some vandalism that occurred here at the building. We believe over the weekend, probably Friday night, or maybe early Saturday morning, since then, we have locked that area. And so we are, we've moved forward to hopefully stop that from happening again. Luckily, it just made the building a little warmer than usual yesterday, until they got it figured out and got the AC back up and running. So it wasn't, fortunately, it wasn't too much of an issue. Website resolutions for 2014 and 2015 are now on the website. If you want us to go back further than that, let us know. We have so many of those change year to year. They're updated year to year, but we've got all of 2014 and 2015 up to date, and we're working on getting all of the ordinances on there as well. We're in the process of scanning that in and getting those all organized and on there. So it's, we're working on it. And the last thing I have, on Friday, I will be not in the office at all on Friday. I'll be attending the Chambers Leader Cast event out at the SwifteL Center on Friday, so I will be out there all day. That's all I have.
What format are you using to put the ordinances on?
We are going to, kind of how it is now, where there's, if it's a speed limit ordinance, we have it under, you know, speed limit ordinances, and then you click on that, and then you can find it underneath there. Because the ordinances, if we put them in by number, there's really no rhyme or reason to it, and it would take someone to do some massive searching. So we're trying to put them under kind of a topic heading.
Did you look at any other counties, how they had their ordinances on?
I have, and I'll look some more, so.
I'll just say, because when I was researching the liquor license ordinances, I looked at a lot of counties. Pennington County, I think, is the one that really has a great system, if you wanted to look, how they do the indexing, so you can find things.
Yeah.
It was, it was a, I'm pretty sure it was Pennington County that was so easy to find.
And, you know, and Michelle and I have discussed that, too. We're trying to make it as easy for the person looking it up as possible.
Exactly.
So we'll do- So we'll do some more research on that. But we're in that process.
That's great.
That is great. And, and it would be good to make it easy, because I don't think our website is easy to navigate through. So the easier we make that ordinance search, the better.
I think that's a great idea. And I think if it becomes, you look at Pennington and it's a radical change. Maybe look at finding an intern. That'd be a good project for them to restructure. You know, we wouldn't be the first body of government had to retitle everything to have it make sense. Because over a period of years, they get so deep in the weeds, they need to step back out and get it restructured. The state of South Dakota's done that a couple of times, so. Anything else, Stacy?
I'm just continuing my work on the 34th Avenue and 213th Street projects. 34th in terms of the property transactions, we are ready to close. I'm just working on the paperwork with that and getting all that out to the landowners. We are still working through an easement with Everest and the culvert and the mining that goes under, the conveyor belt that goes under the road. So I'm working with Everest and Mr. Burke on that. I hope to have that to you by the next meeting ideally. And then with 213th, just working with Kerry, there will be one property transaction in that matter. And just moving forward with that. And if anyone has any specific questions, I can certainly answer them.
Any questions? Okay. Well, let's work down the sick bay. We'll start down at Leanne.
Thank you. On April 23rd, I sat through the Tyler demonstration with the Register of Deeds Office on, on the new software program that would allow for eventually e-filing of deeds and any recorded documents and would allow the public after a while to be able to pull up documents, print them off. It's exciting. It would, this, and that's the long-term excitement, the short-term excitement for the Register of Deeds Office is that they would just scan things once instead of twice like they do now. And it would really create some efficiencies. Last time I talked to Bev, she hadn't got a quote on what it was going to cost. And so I don't know that I, I have the answer for that. And that'll be coming forward. But this was just an amazing software program. And the thing that I had mentioned to Mike is it has a unit that allows you to record your county liens. And so that you can easily track your county liens and, and, and record the payments in a much better system, from what I understand from Bev and Irene, than what we've got right now. So that would be great with one of our strategic goals, which is to look at our, our county lien issues. But that'll be coming. And if I remember right, 23 counties in the state maybe already have this system. Bev is planning a trip to Moody County to actually, they've got it and, and to look at it. And I think maybe I'll go along with her if it works out schedule-wise. But it just really will move the Register of Deeds Office another step forward into the electronic age. It was pretty cool. I worked with the county development officer and with Laura. And we did the interviews for the, the deputy county development officer. And as everyone knows, Richard Haugen was, did I say his last name right? Was appointed to that position. And now we're looking for somebody to fill his current position. On April 24th, the county planning and zoning board met. And we had our final meeting regarding the county comprehensive plan for review purposes of the ordinances. So we're through all of the ordinances. We are waiting now for First District to do the first draft in writing. And then they're going to contact us to schedule another meeting and we'll start approving that draft. So that's, that's moving forward. April 27th, along with some of the rest of you, I attended the poultry crawl that was put on by the South Dakota farm families. Very interesting. Learned a lot of things about poultry operations. And I just want to know why Iowa has so many more of them than South Dakota has. It's, it's an interesting question. On April 28th, I attended the volunteer appreciation ceremony at the OAC. And again, as always, they've got just a great program out there. Was at the parade for Walk a Mile in Her Shoes last Friday night. And last night I attended the hospital remodeling meeting and heard more in-depth information regarding what we were looking at here. And I think one of the statistics that, that they didn't share with us today is that in that 1964 hospital building budget process, the county paid 23% of the cost of the hospital. What they're asking us for now is a lot less than 23%. Just throwing that number out. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
On April 27th, I also attended the poultry crawl. Concerns over the bird flu are well noted throughout the state and surrounding states. Just sounds to me like the ideal weather conditions that promoted this. And hopefully they get through it this, get into the warmer weather and it will subsidize. But I feel for those guys that basically lose a whole crop of birds or whatever and have to wait to rebuild, I guess. On May 1st, I did participate in the Walk in Her Shoes. Very fun evening. The next day, feet were a little bit sore, but well worthwhile. Friday, last Friday, I did go to the Outdoor Adventure Center. I was invited to the pie social. Basically an overview of activities offered out at the Outdoor Adventure Center. I still receive, still receiving concerns over receiving the mail up in Oak Lake and Argo Townships. I guess, Dick, if we could get Richard to maybe stop at the post office up there and talk to the postmaster or something. It's, these people are having to go into white to pick up their mail. And the white post office is only open on a limited basis. Four hours a day, various days. It's over the minimum maintenance signs where they're being put. Some people's driveways are, their residence is up the roadways and it's actually minimum maintenance from their driveway pass. But the minimum maintenance sign is being put at the intersection. So the mail people will, will not go up to their mailbox. It's just one of those deals and I don't know how to, I guess it's postal regulations that govern this. And they're, and hopefully we'll get this remedied before, you know, before long. So I did receive, well, I actually stopped by my house yesterday morning. Some of the trucks going back from the paving project, they're cutting across township roads. Not saying they can't keep them off the township roads, but it'd be nice if they stay on a established route, I should say, if possible. These township roads are still soft from the spring and there was some concern. And I said, you know, maybe whatever if bows or maybe the county could help blade it at least to get it shaped back up. But if you can talk to them too, Dick, that's, that's all I've got.
On April 21st, along with my counterparts here, we toured a possible location for 4H. On April 27th, I attended the poultry crawl where we learned a lot of, I learned a lot about the avian flu that's carried by the migratory birds. I also learned that the turkey plant in Huron is owned by Hutterites, which I, all the colonies own that. And I found that extremely interesting. And one of the Hutterites who raises turkeys was one of the individuals who sat at tables. And I, I found it extremely interesting that in 20 weeks, he could take a baby turkey to 45 pounds. I think that's phenomenal. On April 28th, I missed the extension board meeting due to a death in the family. So I'm not sure what all went on there. April 30th, I worked fitting shoes for the domestic abuse walk a mile. And on May 1st, we fit a bunch more shoes. And then I attended the walk. And I want to commend my fellow commissioners and our office, Stacy, for all of the extra work. The commissioners for walking, our office for the extra work that you put forth in raising money for the domestic abuse shelter. This is their, their, they have two big fundraisers and this is one of them. And I really, really appreciate our office backing that with their bake sales and everything else that they did. So thank you very, very much. On May 1st, I talked to Ty Eschenbaum with the G-O-E-D office regarding engineering, an engineering fees grant for the Northern Sky Dairy Road. And they submitted a grant with First District's help. So it's going to put that road project back a little, waiting for engineering. Hopefully we get the grant for the engineering fees. And then we can continue on. And I, I'm sure that's not going to make some township people happy, but that was a necessity. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. I did tour the 4H facility there on the 21st, or not facility, potential space for that. Anyway, look forward to working on that project here. Otherwise, the rest of the week was kind of light for me. Most of my meetings are coming up here all on the same day at the same time. So we get to move those around. So it's nice when all three of them are on the same day from eight o'clock until four o'clock. Anyway, no, I don't have anything else after that.
Thank you. I was also light on meetings, but not phone calls. And I spent some time with Ryan's dad, who was representing the railroad. And he did offer to mitigate any problems we're having with them. And I'll talk to Commissioner Krogman about the 34th and talking to his dad about bringing this to our attention, that we're supporting them and we'd like a little support in return. Ty Eschenbaum did call me. And I guess, being one not to overstep my limits, I did a little bit. This $100,000 grant that Commissioner Miller was referring to from G-O-E-D required my signature. And I didn't have your approval. And I weighed heavy on this. We didn't have time to call a meeting because of the deadline. Todd Kays and what's it, Ted, right, from up there? Up there in Watertown, that there wasn't time for a meeting. So I signed it. You can refuse the grant if we get it. So I figured, well, I'll, I'll just go ahead and sign it. I figured the $100,000 was more important. That'll tie in with the $200,000 that we got from DOT. And as a reminder that on 34th, we didn't have any money from DOT. So we just winged right through that process. No, it wasn't required to send it forward. But that's what, a little bit of a holdup on 213th is, is we do have a lot of money from the state. And they need to see the plans, which they're looking at right now. And Kerry's got those turned in. Called me the next day after our meeting. Have you noticed in the news that the legislature's having a special session on county government? And I just wanted to run by the commissioners, did you want us to examine that as a, as a group? Or do you want to, as your prerogative as a citizen, to comment on county government directly? I mean, you're a citizen of South Dakota, so you're more than free to do so. Or do you want to look at some of the statute changes that may benefit county government? And you had opinion on that, whether we would make these decisions as a group or as an individual?
Tom, when you're talking about statute changes, you mean any recommendations that come out of that, that study group?
Yes.
Are you suggesting that we have input into that?
Input, and when they have the summer study, that we would send along statutes that bother us or general concepts that are hindrance to county government. I know many counties got a problem with the way revenue's raised and they're in charge of all these prisoners and et cetera, you know? I'm not saying that's the sole thing. And we can do a lot of research with this and along with it. But it was in the news and I talked to Spence Holly some, although he's not on that particular summer study. But I was just wondering if you wanted to propose any changes? Or we could go through our state association and say, we're concerned about this. But this will be taking place during the summer. And then there will be another meeting, I believe, of the state association's committee that examines law changes. So I'm just looking for your opinion.
I also had a conversation with Representative Holly regarding that comment that was in the paper. The three large bills that have impacted the judicial branch in the last few years all started out, I believe, as summer study programs. And, and I'm thinking, and this was his thoughts, that there may be some movement toward making some changes. But I have no idea what those movements are. And I, I don't know if, if, if it's appropriate, because I don't quite know how the summer study sessions work, for us to make any inquiries about that. But would First District have any information on that? Could we put out a, you know, Todd Kays might know what's going on with that. It'd be nice to know before we make a decision if, how we'd like to participate.
Well, that may be, that's a great idea. You know, of course, they're in charge of city, I mean, help cities as well as counties. But as you say, Todd's at the Sioux Valley meeting on May 18th? Well, that'd be a good time to ask him that and maybe get some direction. Maybe by then we'll find out a little more the issues. You know, and our deputy state's attorney may have a few statutes that bother. I know that I've dug around and once in a while come across something that's a little 1840-type stuff that could maybe stand a little tweaking. But, so I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention and get their thoughts. Maybe we should wait till the Sioux Valley meeting, see what Todd has to say.
Well, you know, I, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to do a work session down the road on something, on discussion of some of these issues. But the deal is this, if they're going to have a work study session, they're going to expend the funds. Something's going to come out of it, okay? And if we're going to sit back and just watch it and not have any input, it's shame on us, okay? So we need to either be at those meetings potentially, you know, that you may not get a chance to talk, okay? But at least we understand where they're coming from and hear the discussion. You know, we went to a drainage meeting. They had that drainage stuff and they're talking about that. And that's open to the public, these meetings are. And I think we need to be at there so we're on top of where they're going and why they're going there. And we can look at ourselves and say, hey, hold on a second, you know, don't, just because one county's having a bad thing, don't upset the whole apple cart for that, you know, type of thing. Because I think that can happen sometimes. You can make changes for some that now of a sudden affects other counties. And so I definitely think we need to be not necessarily at the front, involved in testifying. But we have to keep our thumb on it to get the pulse of this whole thing there. Because something will come out of it. And if we don't, it's our fault.
So are you thinking that we as a county, as opposed to our organization, should be attending those sessions? Somebody, we should have a representative in the audience at those meetings?
Yeah, I think it wouldn't hurt at all. Depending on if it's a commissioner, if it's staff, you know, again, I'm not sure what's going to come out of the, the meeting and where it's directed to. You know, sometimes they say we're doing drainage, but we don't know what exactly part of drainage. Or we're going to do funding for counties, where they're getting it and how we're going to change those things. And that's a big issue for us of how it's going to change our funding levels and stuff down the road. And so I think, you know, whether it's our finance, you know, department that sends people to, to find out some of those things or if it's our assistant, you know, commission assistant, I'm not sure. I just think we have to have somebody there to be able to keep open the line of, of communication.
Would it be appropriate to ask Stacy to see if she could find their agenda and who's on that summer study committee? And when they plan on having their meetings? And just get us some information about that?
Yeah, she put it in our packets, saying, here's the schedule, this is what they're planning on. And then between us, we decide if we want to take a, take a road trip, there where it's at and go that way. But, I mean, it's directly. I mean, it's not just something that's secondary to us. It's right, it's just right between the eyes. So we need to, we need to pay close attention to it, in my opinion.
I'm sure there's an agenda. There is, their other summer study is an agenda. And somebody's got something going there. And you, you touched on a point that I brought up at our last meeting in Pierre was that sometimes I think we ought to have class one, two, and three counties. Because Emma sat on. Because Emma sat on the committee with the state before. And when those are discussed, a lot of times, it's the big counties versus the small counties. And if they had different classes, certain law changes would affect the big counties and not the little ones, or vice versa. It would fit more appropriate to their needs. But, and many of us liked that idea. And so, I don't know what, where we're at on that. But we currently don't have anybody on that state board, do we? The South Dakota Association of County Commissioners on there, which will meet. Normally, this is the time, May, June, we're supposed to send in ideas and forward it. Well, it'll be brought up at the Sioux Valley meeting. It's got to go through them first and then to the state. But we don't have anybody. I don't know if we're allowed one or each county.
Commissioner Miller is on the resolution committee.
For, yeah, yes, with the Sioux Valley. Thank you. There, I was looking at us personally, but yes, perfect is for Sioux Valley. We don't have a Brookings County appoint position.
For the state?
For the state, yeah. We have you through Sioux Valley.
I think that those, I'm not sure how that board is compiled. Do you know? The State Board of County Commissioners, how is that?
How do you get on it?
Yeah.
How do you get on the board of directors for the state or association?
I think Dennis.
You know, Dennis wasn't on that.
It's elected.
I think it is elected, and I think it's through the county.
At convention in September.
Yeah, yeah.
I could've sworn Dennis was on there. But I thought maybe got it, maybe each district sends one.
Dennis was on the resolutions committee.
He was the same guy.
And, and Stephanie is on the resolutions committee, representing the Sioux Valley Commissioners Association. And then, you are also the proxy to the executive board of the S D A C C.
Right, I'm the proxy.
If, if Commissioner Haas can't.
Can't go.
Can't go.
And that's as close as we get.
Well, we've got a lot to learn, and, but it'll be happy. And I agree with Commissioner Krogman. We can sit and wait to get run over, or we can get part of the process.
But I think we should also talk to Todd at the 8 county meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we'll have a better idea than what's, how to do that.
And no offense to Bob and Chris, is that they can't operate outside the previous agreement of the association. And this is now take place after the summer study. So, although I'm sure Bob has a lot of input or history.
I'm sure he does.
So, is that something that we should make contact with Sioux Valley in advance? Get that put on the agenda? That we'd like to discuss this issue? Is, I'm looking at the agenda that they sent out that you showed us.
I think so.
I don't, I think we can just talk to Todd.
Okay.
As Brookings County. Yeah.
You know.
Probably warn him though.
It's nice to have a little time in advance, so you get material if he needs to do that.
But our Sioux Valley is our representation to the, to the state association, right? And I think there's, should be a discussion at this meeting about all of our counties that are in our association, about what's coming forward. And how do we get some type of representation or some type of involvement there? So, I mean, I think it would be a good idea to put it on, on the agenda. And that way, the other counties will see it and change, can talk about and discuss it. And, and we can formulate a plan to make sure Bob and Chris know that we want to be involved. And I'm sure they're going to be very involved. But, you know, we, I think, again, sitting back and waiting for our association to represent us without giving them the input, I think is, is not a good thing to do either.
And if we put it on the agenda in advance, then people could be prepared to answer our question.
This agenda has been set, though. This is the agenda set by Moody County. So, I don't know that I can add, I can't add to it.
But is it possible to send out an email that just says, when we get there, when it gets to the other part, we're going to ask that this be put on? And if anybody wanted to, if Todd wanted to bring some information about it, he'd be prepared?
I think Todd should be warned, first of all. He's not prepared to discuss that according to the agenda. And there is an other. I think an email to the other counties would be appropriate, as well to Todd, that Brookings County is coming prepared to at least discuss or question the summer study on county government. And Stacy, could you do that? Okay. I have met with Dr. Curtinbach and East Brookings a couple of times and told them that the road's going to get built. And we've been promised some money. And we'd like to have them proceed with the collection of that money. And we discussed this before, rather, they would like to gather it all up and make a presentation to us rather than trickle into Vicki's office. Well, speaking of Vicki or any of our department heads, when it comes to county statutes or government, if you're made, I think they should be brought into the loop, all our department heads of potential changes or discussions by this state summer study. Because you may have something that you want changed. And so, but back on the 34th, they will be raising the money. We do have two in kind, and I don't quite know how.
How do we get that with, we have a bid, right? But then, there's in kind that is coming from people that are not bidding. So, is there a way we can get in com, you know, you know, to be able to get those, that in kind contribution from them and track it? How do we do that?
I, I left it with Dr. Curtinbach to visit with them over the complication of that in kind gift promise and see if they had a solution that would result in.
I think, I think we need to be proactive on that, because it's our problem, not theirs, how we accept that.
Their money, though, not ours.
But I still think we need to be proactive on how we can, if, if that's how they want to contribute. And so, I just don't know that, who needs to really look into that? Vicki, as far as legislative audit, how would we receive in kind? Do you have any idea?
That would be something we'd have to talk to them about. I don't know right offhand.
And I think, I think maybe that's something that should be done. So that we at least have an idea how we can handle that.
I can touch base with Dr. Curtinbach with this and get, ask him how he's coming along with that and that we do have some questions along this and have him visit with Vicki. But, but there, I talked to Jay Bender too. They're very excited about the idea of going around, collecting the money and making a presentation. So, we'll have to figure out the in kind promise. I guess that's it. We have a 4H, the Resource Center. Are we going to schedule an appointment with them? With Jeff Weldon referred to it in their meeting about the resource, LeAnn, Stephanie. Do you have a, a time plan or a thought?
I'm ready, I'll feel better and we'll do that.
And I did talk to Jeff about that. And I, I told him that we were gathering some information, because we wanted all the historical documents and that we were going to look at those and that we would then contact him.
Yeah, there's a lot of historical documents.
Yes. And you sent some. I just haven't had a chance to review them. Did you also send those to Stephanie? Did she get that same email? Thank you.
Now, there's a few little interesting lines in there that need close attention in this.
If you need them again, let me know. If you, I'm talking, if she, I sent some information to both LeAnn and Stephanie regarding his, historical documentation on that.
I'm not sure if I sent those particular highlighted lines to Stephanie or not. If you could share it with her. Don't want to have a meeting outside a meeting.
If that's satisfactory.
Okay, that's all I've got. Would you like to take a break before we get to work session? Okay.
Commissioners, or can I make a comment?
Sure.
Tom, or Commissioner Wyeth, you asked me about the stealth, put up radar on 34th Avenue North.
Yeah.
Can I just give you some quick figures? I need to move it to another location where I got complaints. So, if you're, we put this up on Wednesday, April 29th. We ran it through Sunday, May 3rd. On direction going northbound, there was 346 cars over that time period that went north. 403 cars went south at a total of 749 cars. And so, the 85, of the total 749 cars that traveled that from April 29th to May 3rd, the 85 percentile was 43 miles an hour. We put it a quarter of a mile north of the stop signs. So, it'd be in that where Joe lives and by his driveway, by, near his driveway and stuff. What was interesting, it also analyzes the best time for any enforcement. And it's Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. And what was interesting about Friday night, that there was 4:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., it showed some activity for speeding for, in that 15 percentile on, on Friday morning, between 4 and 8. So, that was kind of interesting. But the best time for enforcement of the ones that were speeding was Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And Fridays, it was 4:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. and, and also 8:00 a.m. to noon. Then, on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. But again, 85 percentile was below the speed limit at 43 miles an hour. Which I travel that road and 35 is plenty, as bumpy as it is. I got bounced all over, you know, just at 35. But so is the average speed is 43.
Okay, thank you.
On a traffic, normal or excessive on a per day basis?
Well, per day basis, you're running around 80, 90. For some reason, on, on the 2nd, there was only six cars that went down that road. But normally, it's in the 80s or 90s. So, I don't know why that particular time, there wasn't many cars. But you're running about anywhere from 70 to 90 cars a day.
The 2nd was a Saturday, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering how much, I think, you know, my thought, work traffic. And they're not working on Saturday, although Sunday was high, huh? The 3rd?
And I think Saturday, you know, you got some garbage, you know, people coming down that road. You know, going to the dump or going to the landfill and so forth. There is that stable down there. When I was down there just watching traffic, there was a few, you know, trucks and horse trailers coming down that road.
Question, is that high for a township road?
Well, I would think so, absolutely. There's some township roads that'll see hardly any traffic a day, so.
I guess the question would be is whether this bypass is causing extra burden or the work development, the number of workforce in Brookings is causing undue hardship on the township. I guess when 34th Avenue first was acquired, I'm sure that's what their, the commissioners thought was at that time to get it from the township, because it was getting so much use, but.
What I could do is I, I need to move it to another location for a week. And then, I could bring it back to that location and then just compare. Because we're just starting to get, you know, traffic changes on that road right now. They're just starting it, so we'll see what it is again in a couple of weeks.
I don't think they've started their flag operation yet, which is always people avoid. Commissioner Johnson, you were saying, thinking of something there.
Yeah, there's been a lot of increase in traffic since 14 bypass construction has started.
Well, and I also think, you know, with Bell Brands being right there, straight shot right to it. You come off that paved road, take the gravel, and that's how you get to it. And there's 200 more jobs there. I mean, there's, and those jobs aren't just people located in the city of Brookings proper. They're going to be countywide. And so, and if, you know, if the jobs were on the other side, they wouldn't take that gravel road. They'd go in and come in off of a paved road, 22nd or something, you know, to get to those other ones. So, I think moving those number of jobs over east of the interstate is going to cause more and more traffic down that road heading in that direction.
But I do believe there'd probably be more traffic on it if the road was in better shape. Because it's terrible. I mean, it's in really bad shape right now.
So, I guess the question is, we get this information, what are we going to do with it? And then, whether we don't, just tell Aurora, you're busy and get busy? And/or do we want to help them take it over? I mean, what level of involvement, if any, we want to do? And I think that's where, you know, gathering this information's great, but what are we going to do with it? And nothing's fine. I mean, that could be one of the, but something to think about for a future meeting, okay? Thank you. Let's take, take how long you want, five minutes? We'll be back at 10:41, according to the computer. Uh, we'll be back at uh, ten forty-one according to the computer.
So he's probably should hit it make himself better than.
I don't know, cause it looks, it looks awful. You know, it's gonna look thicker if you get three foot X less, uh, you know? But I mean, it uh, you're, huh, it's gonna be very noticeable once they get done, you put straight. Man, frickin' people. The flagman didn't know what the hell they're doing, see? I don't, so.
Probably in your locker.
I might have one.
I might have a highlighter.
A paving project, they drove three feet narrower. I was out there fencing yesterday and I made it. It's an overlay, I mean, it's the way you do your work, but you gotta be out there, sure. I mean, the state does one, they have an inspector on the project. Always make sure I had one guy out there all day long.
Okay, we're all back.
They just call them and they come home.
Uh, seven minutes, eight minutes later, but uh, when I got all this material in our packet, I had it printed out, I guess. Again, printouts for everybody?
Michelle's working on that.
Yeah.
I hate to ask for a printout, but I'd.
Yeah, I asked for.
Printer does not work, just like at home.
I, I think there's twenty-two sheets in the what I asked for. And um, and I, I'm a note maker. And I guess, I'm not, I'll be honest with you. I, I feel a little guilty in leadership, but I'm not perfectly clear on the format that you wish to have for this work session or work plans. We started out strategic plan and in there, we had long-term, short-term, which we have a bunch. And I was telling Commissioner Krogman, this is not our department heads fault, but we should've had a template. Every one of them's different. Some of them don't have dollars, some do. And how can we set aside long-term planning? We don't know what it's gonna cost. It's one thing to know. And I really had a loss on how to proceed with this, so I'm definitely open. I, Commissioner Krogman was talking about going in the other room. Personally, when I do work and roll up sleeves, I like to sit across from the table like a boardroom versus this, but. You can hold the door open, I guess, and that, you know? You know, and Eric's more welcome to come in or whatever, but I guess, I think we better visit a little bit about our goals for today and for future days and how you wanna conduct this. I'm open to whatever. We talked about different work session formats, work plans, uh, and everything. And now we have all this information on our department heads. And it's, and it's not easy to work on. It's not complete, as far as my opinion, but maybe you guys can work with it, so take it away.
Here's my two cents. First of all, we got a strategic plan. I think we should follow it. Um, that's what it's there for. And goal one on it says, provide quality county infrastructure, equipment, technology. And objective one, develop and implement a short-range, one-to-five-year capital improvement purchase plan for each department. That's what I think we should do. We've asked them to do that. We should go through and say, how do we wanna handle this uh, project down the road? How do we want our department heads to handle this? Do we want our department heads, you know, we have technology things, they're gonna need computers in a certain amount of time. Do we want them to put that in their budget? Or do we pull that out of ours as a capital expenditure that we have saved over here out of, out of certain things? Or do we say, no, this is the budget? You know, on a smaller item, two thousand dollars, four thousand, five thousand dollars for upgrade of computers. Um, I think we see that it's in there, it comes in their budget, we approve their budget for it. Um, but what I wanted to see is, I wanna see some large, you know, roads, bridges, uh, facilities that we're gonna need down the long-term road that we need to either start saving for or start planning for that process. And then we also need to discuss, how much do we wanna have in reserve? How much do we wanna save and say, you know what, we're not spending this in case we have a disaster that we need, we need five hundred thousand dollars uh, for what we've been planning for with Bob forever, that all of a sudden, we have to expend some funds. So um, I think just going, starting with the strategic plan and, and working through the facilities of each department here and discussing that on each one on a basis and how we wanna handle these, um, you know, would be a first start. And then I think that will facilitate a lot of discussion of everybody's ideas.
And I have a thought from an opposite direction, but we've spent a lot of time talking about our strategic plan and we have, we know what's in it, okay? And I understand that we'll be doing our budget stuff and we'll be talking about those capital improvements and those other kinds of things when we do that. I'd like us to touch on this work session topics, um, list that some of you've worked on before because you were on the board before. But I think today, if we just kinda looked at that and, and, and did an overview to see which ones stay on, prioritize those, and then draw our strategic plan stuff into that list for our next update, that that would maybe keep us on task for prioritizing.
I guess I just wanna make sure that we had department heads all involved. If they, they submitted to you, they submitted their plan on paper. Uh, we read through their plan. Uh, do we schedule time for them to come in? And we ask them questions and what, you know, how they derived with their plan and work through it. I mean.
That would be where we would get our dollars, I think, directly from.
It'll be an estimate of dollars, I mean, five years down the road, you don't know the cost, but I mean, you'll have a, a very good idea.
Well, uh, back on my confusion is that we allow so much capital expenditure have in the past during the regular budget process. They come in and it, it was, I'm kinda with Ryan. I didn't express this, it's, you know, after the, the big dollar amount, the things we really need to start prioritizing and budgeting for, setting aside for the bigger projects. And I guess, he and I both had the same experience. We were both park board members. And the city has a template. And you had to send in that temp, in that template. So whether you're the street department or the park department or whoever you were, it all looked the same, uh, you know, as far as the order, whatever, and, and the procedure. So it was just easier to take your finger and go through and just look at each one and.
And maybe we develop that for next year, because we'll be doing this all again this year. But I don't, I don't know that we wanna go back and have anybody redo anything. I think we work with what we got and, and we'll know better. And maybe we could play dryzer.
Well, and this is where.
Basically come up with a template.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is if Stacy could maybe talk with them and see what they use and then maybe insert um, the, the, the department stuff into that and, and put them in there. And then if there is a question on how much that, if they didn't put any dollar amount saying, hey, what were you thinking? And then she could put that in and say, well, it's gonna cost us ten thousand dollars for this, what you thought. You know, then she can maybe even come back with a, our next study session and, and go from that and, and stuff. So um, yeah, I, I totally agree with you. I think if we have that form and department heads can see it, every year, we can just update it, work through it. We kinda have a little bit of a roadmap of where we're going.
Um, does everybody have their work session topics? Is that what you were saying? Everybody has that? Okay. Once again, I have mine in paper. Uh, is, is everybody in consensus to just go right down this list here and have a discussion on this first here? Okay. Well, Thirty-Fourth Avenue, other than uh, railroad leases and right-of-way and all that, we're well on the way. I guess the only thing left there is to decide what in, what we have to pay, if we do have to pay it, and do we wanna pay it? I guess, uh, so I, we'll let that play out.
What's, what has happened with the railroad? Has?
Okay, well, we got the grant laying out there too. That's out there waiting, we're waiting to hear from the grant. And uh, well, there was a fee for uh, getting on the right-of-way to do work. There was a fee to occupy, occupy the right-of-way with yearly uh, for the device to control the safety equipment. And I think, well, it's just very, they're all.
Wasn't the yearly deal kind of a new?
Mm-hmm.
The yearly fee was a new thing that came about?
I thought they were going to dispute that a little bit.
That, it's being disputed. And so, we have all right-of-way fees, and there's two or three different kinds there in dispute. And then the only other.
The fifteen thousand also?
Hmm? I'm sorry.
The fifteen thousand also?
But that's not a right-of-way, I think that's a bill to build the old, I mean, to build the crossing. Not the crossing, but to rebuild the track over the road is, I think, the fifteen thousand dollars. And that's not necessarily a.
That's not in dispute.
That's not a fee. The fee was the ongoing stuff that they were gonna say.
Right to occupy.
Yeah.
Work in there.
It's disputable whether we should ever pay it, but it's not in dispute because they got us there. But the, there's these other ones, I think a thousand dollars and five hundred and fifteen hundred. Uh, and then, of course, the grant is still out there.
Crossing.
And it probably wouldn't hurt to.
So for purposes of this form, what we're saying under, we're adding a GMH that says we have to get the railroad issues worked out. And are, are you doing that, Tom? Are you in, in um?
Scott, I think Scott was in conversation with us.
Yes.
Scott was in conversation with us.
Do you know if he actually got ahold of him? As of the last meeting, he likes to talk phone tag.
Well, after I visited with Ryan's dad and his offer of talking to the CEO of the company, I did send a, a note to Scott and to Abby. And I, I didn't reveal who it was, it still came out today. Uh, you know, I didn't wanna tie that all in, but um, I said, I spoke to a representative for the railroad and they're asking for a letter of support. Should we take, and this representative has offered to communicate our displeasure over certain processes that have taken place. And I did not hear back from Abby, but I did hear from Scott. That's part of the problem, we got too many cooks in the kitchen, we don't need another one. And that's where it sits. I was gonna talk to Ryan after the meeting, but that's where it sits.
The, the other issue on Thirty-Fourth Avenue, I don't think, and I didn't hear Abby say it in her report, so I don't think the easement's done with Everest yet. And I'm not sure what's going, was that, did she say that? I missed that. Okay.
Yeah.
So we got that? So the only details then that we have left on Thirty-Fourth Avenue is to figure out our stuff with the East Business people and how we're gonna handle that. And to get the railroad part worked out. And we'd like to know maybe when Bose thinks they're gonna start?
I would.
It's gonna be late.
But, but October. But, but October first is the completion date in the contract, right?
Yeah.
So that should be on our list.
But it's going to be later than sooner. Um, well, in those communications, I did see that, uh. We are still disputing the fees. And that, that's, we're waiting for them to. You know, dig their heels in or step aside. So. So, uh, yes, we have fees and, uh. Grants and East Brookings money.
So we're looking good.
Huh?
We're looking good.
Okay. And I think Ryan and I will visit and continue to plug away on, on these and, um. So, and then assign it to Ryan and Tom. If it isn't some, it still is up there. Okay. We have a job. Update on Novita two hundred and thirteenth, uh, road project. Uh, there's one thing I guess I'd, I'd like to inform you is that. As you know, that we bought the little corner and there was some discussion is how much was in the right of way and how many, it's a dollar per square foot is what it is. Is that do we, and Abby feels confident. But she would like to have title insurance on the little piece that we're buying. And, but she is confident that we can proceed with advertising without that beforehand. Because of the history of the one landowner, you know, been that way for a long time. And, and so right now. Uh. We, they're waiting for a railroad grant, but that has nothing to do with us. Do you want to, the minute, um, the department transportation approves the plans that we have. Do you wish to advertise the bids for that?
Is. My question is, does Novita intend to move forward? If they don't get that spur?
I've been told yes, that I've been told by people, one person on the railroad, state railroad board, that they're going to get it done no matter what. And, um, oh, by the way, in that, in our packet, uh, they met. And in three weeks from that date, which would be coming up. Uh, I have asked that member to say, is there anything wrong with you guys committing the money? But even when you don't have it, just saying that you're going to take care of it when the time comes. He says, we've done that before. You know, because they have other projects ahead of it. They, they just do like we're going to do prioritizing. When we get the money, you're going to get it. So they give them a commitment to proceed. How legal binding that is, I guess legal is us setting a budget too, but, uh. Did you want to sit until you wait for the railroad authority?
I know. My question was, is Novita, irregardless of whether that happens or doesn't happen, does Novita intend to move forward?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, they, what I meant was that they're planning moving forward with the railroad part. Even if they gotta do it another way, but they're very confident they're going to get the money. And I got an inclination that they are.
Railroad's very vital to their business. I mean, it's, it has to be. It has to be there for their shipment, receiving and outgoing. Um, I like to make sure that railroad's going to be there, uh, one way or the other before we proceed with the advertising for business road.
That's where I'm coming from.
So the two of you are thinking that if, if it doesn't work out with the railroad, that the Novita project's not going to move forward?
Well, Tom, Tom is saying that if they don't get the grant, they would still proceed with it. With doing the river, doing their river project on their own, right?
The rail. Yes, that's the way I've been told. No, not, that's told, not in writing. They are finishing, they're going to do the project. I will say, we're going to have a little problem if we promise a road and we're not delivering. Once the DOT approves the plan.
And I think we've already entered into our road agreement saying what dates we're going to comply with. I, I think we need to bid.
Ryan?
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking about timing, you know, because we've already agreed now that we can. Build the road as a gravel road for this year and next year to the overlayment. You know, do you bid those separately at a different time to where we right now go out to bid for the engineering? To do the bidding for the gravel road and, and if something happens. Do we end up basically have a good gravel road? We don't have a paved road to nowhere. And so, you know, would that be something that we said, okay, let's go to bid for a portion of it and not bid the asphalt of it? And wait to bid that January when bids are good, when can we get in? We know that there, we might even. Save some money, maybe, I mean, you're rolling the dice. Oil prices go up. Where it's going to cost us more money or do we lock in? Uh, but you know, if we lock in, do the bid and we hold out if something bad happens with the rail authority and the finance, you know, because you. You don't know if that rail, I think is very important to them for their efficiencies of their business. Um, and if that is not there, now all of a sudden they have to drive their truck and does that make more cost to them? And now all of a sudden this isn't, this doesn't make financial sense and all that kind of stuff. So. I think it's very important that that rails spur get going, but I also think that. Um, if our, our cost, I guess, well, would be building a, a really nice gravel road. Which eventually down the road, that area is going to get developed. I mean, it's too good of an area. For expansion of whether this type of property, this or whatever, it's going to get developed eventually.
And, and maybe this is naive. What I'm going to say, because I wasn't part of all those conversations about that road. But I go out, I do drive out there. I look at it. I look at what we're doing. And had I been sitting on the commission and maybe this wouldn't have made any difference, but I would have been saying, we should pave all of two hundred and thirteenth. We shouldn't just pave that first mile and a half. That's what makes it a road to nowhere, by the way. And, and maybe we need to be thinking with some vision ahead. Because we need that connection between thirty fourth avenue, which is going to be a fantastic. Asset to, to those businesses that are over there. And we need to have some way besides highway fourteen. For travel to get to those businesses from that part of our county. And at some point, we might be thinking we should just pave the rest of two hundred and thirteenth so that you've got a connection. Maybe twentieth street will get paved someday, but I'm, I'm thinking that might not be while any of us are sitting on this board. Okay?
Yeah.
And, and you know, we talk about how important that connection would be on twentieth street coming down. You know, when you, when you look at the interstate as, as being. Like a river flowing through the county and you got to get across that. If two hundred and thirteenth was fully paved. I don't know how Dakota Prairie's planning their buses to travel to school. They'd be able to go down that. It wouldn't matter if we had twentieth street or not. They could go down to thirty fourth. Shoot straight down, hook onto thirty second, and they'd be on paved roads all the way. People going back and forth to work. I, I just think maybe. One of the things that we got to look at someday is going to be having so, a, a good road between Aurora and Brookings. And we're already going to have half of a good road.
Well, I, I, I think historically what happened was when this project came. We weren't looking to build a road out there or even own a road. And so between the state money, which is only for this far.
Right.
And we figured the property taxes that we will receive once they get to the full level. This was not going to be a burden on the taxpayers. And that, and I guess it was a break even deal and for an economic development project.
And I understand that, but you look at it and it looks like half of a bridge.
I think Ryan's got a very good point on the paving part. If we wait to bid that after the first of the year. And Leanne also has a very good point in a road to nowhere. I, I agree. I feel if we grade the road up to a certain point this year. Uh, maybe look into the future to regrade the rest of the road to thirty fourth to make it a. Uh, a through road. I think what we'll end up with. Once, once the project moves along, we get it paved next year, we're going to be sitting in the same situation we have on North Thirty Fourth. You're going to have a lot of Aurora residents going to work at Daktronics and them. They're going to go down that paved road and they're going to have a township gravel. Which it's not going to hold up to the traffic. I think as we look into the future, like you say, I think it'd be, uh, worthwhile. Uh, you brought up, you brought up, uh, the bike path issue. I mean, there's funding.
Yeah. Those are good points. So, uh, to summarize this. Would it be safe to say? That when we hear back from the department transportation. That at that time, we'll make a determination, because we'll know more from the railroad authority. And that's actually from Novita too, maybe a letter of assurance that they're going to take care of this rail thing with or without the state. Uh, before we put it out the bid, we look at a two-part bid. And we'll look at it maybe a two-part if we don't have that letter of assurance, something like that. Yeah. But it'll be a two-part bid either way.
Thing I'd like to do is get Carrie's input on that. If there, if it's going to cost us some money. That, because we're doing it two-part, it's going to cost us ten grand or something like that. I guess that would not be my. And I don't know why it would be. Again, I'm not, this is, yeah, this is only the second road I built. I still haven't had the first one started. So, uh, I don't, uh, you know, so I don't know, um, how that would work, but I'm, I'm thinking we could probably separate that to where we can get work. That's going to be ready for them to work through the winter, provide that road that's good. Be able to, uh, not put us out, our next out so far, I guess.
Okay.
If, if we had. If we had the letter of assurance that they're going to go forth whether or not that railroad, uh, spur happens.
Or the, the money.
The grant.
The grant happens. I have no problem bidding the whole thing because I think that'll be cheaper.
Maybe a little. Well, it's, uh.
You did, you saved your advertising.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, let.
Well, and who knows what oil prices are going to do.
They might go no.
Let's do this. Let's have Carrie. If you get ahold of him, Stacy, when he hears from the department transportation, immediately put that on the agenda. And the, and the discussion would be advertising for bids. And then we're, we'll tie all the loose ends into that. Does that sound appropriate?
Sounds good.
Okay. Got that? Get ahold of Carrie.
Get, he's going, he believed it'd probably be early next week when he would hear back from DOT. So you want that on the May nineteenth agenda?
Probably.
For advertisement.
And hopefully, well, for sure.
In the meantime.
Yeah, that, uh, the railroad authority is, Matt, we can also pass on our, uh. Concerns to Novita. And, uh. Just no more information.
We should invite them to meet.
Yeah. Novita, invite Novita also. And then, um. See like, well, and as the last step of desperation, you advertise for bid, you don't accept any. There's nothing against that. So. That's a pretty rinky dinky way of doing it, but.
One thing we did forget real quick is, uh, we need title insurance.
I think we need title insurance myself. I would never for myself, for a client, buy a piece of real estate that I didn't do a title.
I wouldn't either. If that's what our attorney thinks, then I think.
Yeah, that's what Abby said. Yes, thanks for bringing that up.
I had one other question, um, regarding the site. Was there a site plan, uh, entered with the zoning?
Oh, yes, it went through the zoning board. Yes, it did.
A site plan?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that was there in their conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be a certain way, you know, so the roads, like parking, blah, you know.
Okay. I forgot about it till just.
Yeah, yeah. And then there was also, it had to move a little bit because of the wellhead and a few other things.
And could I back up on that?
Neighbor on one of the, on the west side had a concern and I.
I, we don't necessarily need title insurance. What we need is title work. We don't need the insurance. We just want to be sure that little piece is free and clear and that we, we don't have any issue that we need to address. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, when I'm clear, when we hear back from Carrie. Get it added on the agenda and we're inviting Novita to the May nineteenth. Meeting as well.
And if you can communicate to Abby, we're leaning towards title insurance, but title work.
Title work, not title insurance.
But we'll take her recommendation as she's our attorney.
She'll be hoping.
But she felt we could go ahead with any bidding or whatever.
It's based on cost. So if we're only paying, you know, seven thousand dollars or whatever we're paying for it, uh, or seven hundred dollars, whatever. I mean, that cost is going to be very minimal for insurance. I mean, I'm talking like a hundred dollars.
And really all we want to know is that it's free and clear and the title search should tell us that and we would be good.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. Is that it? Well, there's a big one. God, we're going to get out of here by four. Number three, four H facility resource. Center future. How deep do you want to get into this one?
Well, we could add on there that Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Pierce are going to meet with Jeff Walden and.
Okay.
Talk about resource center issues.
I think that's the first step.
Well, one of the things that just back discussions we had where we were having a tough time committing to them if we didn't have a spot for them. That was one of the things in the prior commission had agreed upon was we're not going to go and commit to selling out. The county four H without having a spot for them. And all of a sudden we just, they're scrambling. So we weren't going to displace them. So I think. You know, having that conversation, having that there, uh, does allow us, but at least we have an option now. And if we'll get another option or not, I don't know, but you know. Commissioner Wyssus saying, okay, this is, this year we're going to get something done. And that's great. Exactly. Whether we're going to make that decision. And so I think doing both at the same time is, is a good thing. Uh, but I know Commissioner Miller was very adamant about that, that I'm not going to sell this place unless we have a spot for them. And that's, I think, what we got to do.
And I think as we move forward and, and that it's always an option to say, you know what, we've, we've looked at this. We've considered it over a period of time and we're going to stay where we're at. And just move forward. I, I, I think that's an option that we always have to keep on the table until we get everything tacked down.
Bottom line is the extension board did what, what was asked of us.
While we're on this subject, one of the big issues for me. In my involvement with four H and listening to four H, they want to own their own building. If, whether it's, yeah, yeah, what is the perception is reality? That ever since they had to leave the west end of town and move to where they were. You took our building from us. And is it, when they say us, that they owned it? Are you comfortable with the county owning this future building? Do you actually want four H to own a building? Do they really mean they want to own it or?
Want us to own it.
Or us to own it? Yes.
Because you kind of said, we don't want to be in the same situation we're in right now.
Yeah, but that, having said that, what I mean by that is I don't want. The county to own a building on somebody else's land. That's the situation I don't want to be in. I have no problem with the county. If, if we were to purchase a spot, I have no problem with the county owning that. It's just that I don't want us to put a building on somebody else's land. That's absurd. I don't want money to go into somebody else's project on somebody else's land. I mean, I, I want it to be ours.
Now, you, you deal with them on a regular basis for quite a while. Do they mean that though? Do, do, does four H? When they say the line, which I've heard from many of them, we heard at the summit. We want our own place, our own place. Are they referring to the agreement that we have with the city? Or are they referring own is county or is own four H? What, what are they referring to?
I don't believe that they ever intended that they would actually own that.
Okay. I'm just, because I have been pestered about the, the United Retirement Property. That the county took their property and sold it on them. But it's more of a figurative than a real.
That was the commission that came up with them with four H owning that. The clover cannot own.
But they didn't own it. You know how people after a while, they perceive things and then comes reality and they perceive that they own that property.
So I have a procedural.
As far as staying there, that's fine, but I think it's a, an arranged marriage that is a difficult situation.
I have a procedural question. I have a procedural question. Now, we did tour a, a, a location a week ago or whenever that was. So, is conversations regarding that property, is that an executive session issue then?
I think negotiating with the...
When we negotiate...
If we make an offer, I think negotiating the contract has...
But what, what I'm asking, I didn't, and I knew the part about the negotiations, but discussing as a group, the pros and cons of, of that particular site, is that something that we do in executive session, or is that something we do?
I think we do it, that's not executive, that doesn't fall in.
Okay, uh, number four. Your favorite thing, which I'm more into flying loose and free, but preparing for contract negotiations, preparing for contract negoti- or negotiations with employees, employee, oh, no, see... Employee, high school, legal counsel. Well, litigation concerning contractual matters, discussing marketing or pricing strategy by the Board of Commission in harmful to competitive position. Well, I guess it doesn't say. It says employee. I thought I had, but it was employees, employers. But previously, when you're negotiating with somebody, you don't lay all your cards out.
No. And, and I was wondering if, if we could have an executive session to discuss that property.
I think it would fall under number three, consulting with legal counsel, reviewing communications from a legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters. And we would be, buying something, a contractual matter, and selling it also.
Yes.
Because when this came up a couple of years ago, I first got on here, the city was, they were talking about having an executive session in the negotiation of the...
And I'll, I'll tell you the question that I've got, and then we can figure out how we would deal with it. If we were to look at that particular property, it is, um, possibly more than what 4H would need. And I'm wondering if there are any other of our space needs that we should consider that would impact on a decision there. That's what's been in the back of my mind. And, and I don't know how we have that conversation.
Well, I had that conversation following with a couple of commissioners and the tour. And I think it's more than 4H needs. And I will say, business-wise, that's valuable property. I'm not sure whether the county wants to get in the real estate development businesses. You know, I'm all for doing the right thing for the taxpayers, but on the other hand, I don't like to compete with private industry or private investors. And that'd be my, my concern of getting all that property and holding it on because it has value to somebody else, not us. That's, that'd be my concern.
That's something we're looking at too, is this facility. I don't, I guess your opinions are different mine. I don't think there's enough property, in my opinion, but what activities you're gonna have there.
I agree.
I guess we'd have to see what the use is and, but that'd be my concern. If, if it's not gonna be 4H, it's not gonna be a county used, I don't want a whole property back from private developers and get in the...
And my question is, is when we look at highway department issues, weed department issues, there's, there's a lot of facility there. If there is something else that, that we could tie into that, that, that will be a future need, do we have some future needs in those areas ourselves that, that...
Would it be premature to ask Larry and Ryan to begin some discussion with that person to see what, were there any realistic, realistic purchase?
Well, I guess my, my question is this, is you made the comment that the extension board did what they were asked to do. Is this the only spot that they want or they're happy with? And are they continuing to look, or are they stopped looking?
No. They had looked at numerous spots prior to that, but always lease. And when they found this, this met what they felt the needs were. And so, they stopped.
So, they're not looking for anymore?
No.
This is kind of the place that they've kind of hung their hat and won us...
The reason, the reason that this was so desirable is because it's right across from the Resource Center, from, from Swiftdale. So, if we continue to have achievement days there, which that's the plan, then it's, it's pretty handy to do that. You know, we had looked at different things, like the RTI building, and, and then that was no, not an option anymore because in seventeen, they were talking, carrying that down. And there were numerous other things. I, I tried to buy property over in that area, or to trade our Resource Center for property, and City wouldn't do that. So, I mean, we've looked at a lot of different things in the last five years.
Back to my original question, is it premature to begin some discussion with that landowner? Or property owner?
I don't think it's premature. I think we need to talk.
Would Larry and Ryan be willing to do so?
Certainly.
I know that we're, wanna know what the front end is doing before the back end, but it's kind of a...
I am relatively certain we're going to get a proposal from the OAC.
From the what?
The outdoor activity area. I never say their name right. Somebody...
Outdoor Adventure Center.
Adventure Center.
I can tell you that I will never vote yes on that. For the same reason that I just said.
Okay. And, and, and I understand that, and I'm, I'm hoping that if, if we do get a proposal from them, it would be nice to have more than one option. Well, we have two options. It's nothing or this other spot, I guess. But if we have, if we have a third option, I'm hoping Commissioner Miller might be able just to look at it and consider it. I'm not, and I understand what you're saying there, but ninety-nine years is a long time. But that's, their lease period is ninety-nine years. But it would be nice to be able to, what I don't want us to do is make a commitment anyplace.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Because if we do get, if we do have the benefit of ending up with three options, which is to do nothing, to look at this spot or to look at that spot.
Yeah.
And to weigh the pros and cons, and what it's gonna cost us. And, and, and the long-term maintenance for whatever it is that we're looking at, because we're already spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year on 4H. Once we have a different facility, that is going to be more money than that.
I did see a lot of maintenance potential costs ongoing, but I mean, if this is, you know, works, I guess I'm, all options are on the table myself. And...
But you also have your lease. If you're leasing, you're, you've got a continual cost there also.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we've got a deal now.
And what we need to do is weigh them.
The problem with leasing, you're under their guidelines. You cannot do what you want to do. You're getting pushed around. You're getting moved out of here for this event. You're getting moved out of here for this event. This is being canceled. You can't have that activity in there. Can you have it somewhere else? You're constantly moving around for different options.
See, I, I'm not sure what the, the outdoor adventure center is a lease...
There is a room there. They would have to build on for us to have...
That's exactly what the proposal will be.
I mean, we don't even know what the proposal is. I, I assumed it was joint venture. You're assuming it's leased, or do you know? I mean, I don't know. I didn't know they were looking at... I know they've been interested, but I didn't know they were coming to something.
By the time you pull a horse trailer in there and drop a bunch of horse crap, I bet you people aren't gonna be happy about it.
You know, but the, but the thing is, when we look at those numbers and, and what, what I would like to see, and I don't care which, where we're at, but what I want to see is what the kids are gonna be doing while they're there, what activities are going to be available to them, and how many days out of the year we're going to be using that facility. And, and when you look at what we've got right now, which for 4H throughout the state of South Dakota, what we've got right now is pretty darn good at the Resource Center, but it's not used. So, why is that going to change when we have a different location? And, and what is it that we're gonna be changing? I mean, those are all issues that we're gonna have to discuss when we figure out, you know, how, how big of a facility that we need and, and how much money we're gonna spend for maintenance every year.
You know, something that amazes me is that for a county this size, we can't come up with a nice... I mean, we, we want to get rid of what we have for 4H, and we can't come up with a nice place for them. You go past small counties, Union County, they have just a nice little fairground and everything that they need. Look at Cottington County's facility. Holy buckets, that's a nice facility. You know, and I, I don't, I, I guess I'm frustrated.
It kind of, the county got a lot of money from the state because that's one of their nine designated areas.
Well, that just happened. They, they had that facility way before that.
Oh.
So, when, when we look at all the numbers that, that we got in our report, and we look at what's going on with 4H, and how many kids are in the different kinds of activities, I just hope, I think the nature of 4H is changing. I don't think 4H is what it was when I was a kid. It's different. And we're planning for a long-term investment here. And, and I'm hoping that we're, we're planning for what kids are actually going to want to be doing and where they're going to make a commitment in their time. And those are things I haven't heard us have any conversation about yet.
Well, and I would say the outdoor adventure center is an awfully nice facility too, that our shooting sports gets to shoot in, probably the top in the state. So, you know, that's an awfully nice facility if we were to ever use that. And, you know, and then also, you know, right now, we have, are using, in our Resource Center, we're using two or three offices out of a huge thing. That, and they're not, they're using the conference room. Majority of the stuff, they're not used, they're not using the Resource Center to show horses in or do any of that type of stuff either. I guess my question is, is the property across the street, if that allows them to move more of their activities to that area to allow for some stuff that they have not been able to use do before, and that's what they're willing to do, and they're gonna use that space to there, like, like Leanne just talked about, you know, that's probably the best-case scenario. But also, what you're talking about too is, is if, okay, you know, the horse, what they're doing somewhere else off there is not gonna get moved to this facility, and the things that are being off-site are saying, no, this is just better off-site, then we're buying a good chunk of land there that's not going to be integrated into the, to the system. And I want to make sure it gets integrated in there. I want to make sure that, okay, that extra piece of land that we're buying there that's vacant right now is either used for some type of 4H event or not. That it's not gonna stay somewhere else at a, at a, you know, a farmer that's been donating their time and their space for judging and different things, and they've got it set up. And if you're gonna keep it there, then why are we buying the extra space to have that horse show or judging there? And that's where I want to make sure that that's gonna be utilized and that there, that we're on the same page here that, there, because I understand where Tom's at. I'm all about not getting it private. But I, if the extension board comes to me and says, you get this whole thing for us, these are the plans we have with it. This is what we're gonna be able to do. We're gonna move this place here. We're gonna move this here. And this, we're gonna be able to take stuff that we have been using other places else because we didn't have room to here. And we're gonna be able to put everybody closer together and be able to run it. I, I, that's what I want to see. I don't want to make the mistake that we just bought this extra land and nothing got moved to there, and we're still only having office space and a conference room. Because we can do that somewhere else.
Exactly. And it'd be nice to, to know what those plans are. What are kids gonna be doing there? Why do we think they're gonna come? How many days out of the year are we gonna be using whatever that facility is? I mean, those are the things that I'd like to know.
And I appreciate Sonia getting that list to us, you know, and, and who uses it. It'd be nice to know, you know, if they're meeting once a year for this, you know, in a conference room, what are using it now, is there's a couple of them, can we move those over there? And let's build this out. Instead of having the, you know, again, I'm just trying to throw different clubs that are out there that are meeting somewhere else. We can meet them here now because we have a better facility, a better area for them. And we can store their projects here because we have that space now, and somebody's not donating their space in time. Now, we have a facility to use it. So, I'd like to, you know, I, I'd like to hear that there's some potential from the extension board or Sonia or some ideas of this property, how we can utilize this. That would help me a lot.
And, and I don't know how often the extension board meets with the 4H leaders. Is that something that happens regularly, or...
No.
You know, the 4H leaders, I believe, have their annual meeting for the county. I think it's May eleventh, but I might be wrong on that date. And I'm, I'd like to talk to some of the 4H leaders because those are the people that'll actually say, you know what, if you guys build this facility, this is what we'd like to see, and this is what we'll bring our kids to do. You know, I mean, I'd like to hear some of that kind of thing. And if there's any way that we could participate in their annual meeting or invite them to come meet with us or, or whatever. But those nine, is it nine? I think there are nine clubs in the county. Those nine people will actually have a feel, I think, for how many times they're gonna be at any facility, wherever we've got it, with their kids, and why they're not using the Resource Center now. I'd like to know that.
Yeah, I, I think I saw the list, Little Leprechauns. Sonia, she had another club. I had the book dates from the Swiftdale. And Little Leprechauns was the only regular user.
That's the City of Brookings Club, right? They're, they're in town, is that right? Or pretty close to town?
Those are just the young ones.
Yeah. Those are the, that's the only one that actually uses Swift, or the Resource Center.
And, and there's other stuff out there. But then the white, maybe they'd like to come Brookings, maybe they want to stay in white. They don't want to drive down here.
Well, I'm sure that they go, they use the community all in white because that's where they're located.
Yeah, and so we got a...
For their monthly meetings.
It, it's a tough... Like I said, do we have time for lunch? But, um, but I guess right now...
Well, the nature of 4H is that those buildings are not going to be used every day other than for office space.
And...
But I'd like, I'd like to hear from these activity directors that are directing these activities. I want to hear their concerns over their scheduling, of their, of their issues that they're currently having with scheduling and use of facilities. We're just, we're not, we're not hearing that.
Well, the dog show has been a problem for the last three years. It's had to be rescheduled.
But I mean, you and I hear that. I mean, not everybody hears. I hear from the, from the people that are showing livestock, different issues. There's...
Even the holding barn is a problem.
Great. I mean, we need to know all these concerns, you know, to hear them all.
Well, see, that's where my interest, I think it's a bad marriage, by the way. Forced marriage, an arranged marriage, and I'm not a big advocate of those. I like people that chose, I don't mind marriage. But I like them both going in, not being forced in, you know, to go in willingly.
We'll send a note to go in.
And even those don't work, right, Leanne?
Some of the silly deals, I mean...
But right now, we have Miller Pierce.
C and D up.
We have Miller Pierce working with the city. It'd be appropriate for Krogman and Jensen to visit with the private land.
Certainly.
And we'll keep gathering information. Is there another step you want in there? Okay.
And I don't know if we need to do this. I'm not a big meeting fan. But we, a long time, a couple of years ago, we had a 4H forum where everybody came, and we got a chance to, to listen to everybody and that kind of stuff. I, I wonder if there's a chance for us to get together with the extension board, promotion board, and the leaders, and we have a discussion. And, and we lead that discussion, we lead it, and ask them questions about what issues are you having now? If this was the facility that you went with, if we went with, how could we utilize it, and would anything change? You know, and then that would be the discussion. And, and it might, that discussion starts up. It might turn around and, and get some further discussion from people saying, okay, we got this place, and we're gonna move this, but it's gonna cost us another forty grand to outfit this place to this. How do we, are we gonna expect the county to pay for that? Or are we gonna try to get some fundraising for that? Or something like this, that this is a partnership. Because in my opinion, county, city, state government is moving towards partnerships, not funding the whole thing. And I think we have a better chance to, to sell this and make more sense of this, that if we're gonna invest in this dollars, that potentially, 4H, the private sector, is gonna also have to invest or try to raise some funds. And, and that's just, you know, part of that type of thing. We're gonna provide you with it here, and if this is where you're gonna move everybody, and I want you to utilize it, and I want all these things to happen, if you're gonna add some shows because of it, you're gonna make it a regional shows, and you're gonna gain some money from it, that those improvements and investments, you have some skin in the game, put it that way. you have some skin in the game, put it that way, so.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that summit was not as I envisioned. And it was, uh, the 4H Foundation didn't participate, the university didn't participate. We didn't even take names of people, we didn't have any organization to it. It, in fact, the other night I woke up and, uh, there was an incident at my table. The guy pointed to the numbers we had there and he says, the purpose, what is the purpose of this? And I says, the, learn about 4H and their needs. And he was one that stood up later and said, the purpose of this is to cut 4H. And it wasn't-
They feel like we are their enemy.
Oh, I've already heard that.
That's the problem and, and we need to change that concept.
And, and maybe, maybe we do some of that. I, I just hate that we have all these administrative people, which would be, excuse me, the extension board and the promotion board and, and all of that. I wanna talk to the people working with the kids and, and see what those people are saying.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. But I only have two items, Miller Pierce, Krogman, Jensen. Okay, all right, this point. Okay, seventh liquor license, second reading, next meeting. Okay, Beta. Well, we got Jensen on the board, we're not sure he's ex-official or a voting member, but we're gonna find that out. But how pressing is it to get him out of there?
Pressing to get him out of there or when they want it?
That's where, a timeline, updated, I guess that's-
I think it's not pressing to get him out of there. I feel it's when they want to expand, they're wanting to expand, they get the funding, they'll be, they'll be moving.
Okay.
Cause they've outgrown the facility.
We're, we're fine with them being there i- in, in-
But I just wanna keep in mind that it is a very nice facility and we need to look into the future as a dollar amount, purchase it back.
Is there on our county property?
They're on our property and it is in the, I believe in the agreement that, uh, however, changes hands.
Does it have a price?
It did at one time. At one time it did.
So what happens-
It's not in the agreement, but we, at that time chose not to.
Okay.
So are we able, is that something that we can do long-term budget planning for? Do we know what dollar amount we're looking at eventually?
I can bring up, I don't know what the value of it would have been though. It was market, it'd be market value is what it reads in the agreement. And then Ryan, I don't know if, what market value. It's hard to determine the market value on that piece of property because you're within the county's property.
Yeah, and, and so basically the best, again, this is my opinion, this is for my real estate stuff, there's three different ways that you can put value on property. You can use comparables, you can use, uh, rental income and you can use depreciation. Uh, those are, that's how appraisers will come to an agreement, but they can weigh each of those. And so if we would turn around and say comparable properties, it really isn't a good comparable property because we're, we're not including the land, it's on leased land. Unless we found some other person that was renting a piece of property on leased property, you could use that as a comparable. The other option is, uh, is then, uh, is, is, is the rebuilding of it. And so what you can do is you can take that building, see what it costs, or what it costs, and then you say, take a depreciation off of that, that, okay? If it's got a lifespan of forty years, it's a ten-year-old building, we take twenty-five percent of the value and that's what the value, a depreciated value should be for that, for that building, for the lifespan of it. Um, and, and then there's the, you know, they're getting the rental income, uh, or comps. And, and I just don't know if those two would very, be very good to, to do that. So you probably weigh out the, uh, the, uh, cost of, of building it and depreciating it out.
And I'm sorry, I should know this, but where is that located?
You know, where we got the vehicle to go to the pier, it's out to the southeast.
It's, it's in that same gated area.
Yep, at the back.
And see, I mean, that's, they're kinda held, they can just relocate. Well, they can pick the building up, move it, but that's, you know, you would not be able to do that.
So, in, in the event that they decided to, to move and we bought that back, what would we use that for?
Well, we, we could-
Highway department needs it.
See, and that's what I was asking about that other, that would take care of those needs?
Oh, and it'd be perfect for the weed department offices, there's offices, there's meeting facilities. The only problem with the meeting facilities upstairs is not wheelchair accessible. So that's why the Beta, Beta meetings are not held upstairs because there's no elevator to get to the meeting room upstairs.
Could it work as a 4H facility?
It might, if you could buy some land back from URC.
Okay. A mechanical pole.
We might have a fourth option.
Cause they're not using it.
We're not talking about that. Well, I guess we're trusting Commissioner Jensen and his information service, yeah.
They're, they're, I mean, about every meeting, they're talking about, uh, you know, they're outgrowing the facility. They're, they're more than happy, they're, uh, where they're at. Uh, they really appreciate the county helping them out, uh, with everything they do out there. They're coordinating where they're parking, the snow removal, uh, they're, they're just, you know.
And when they move, they're not going back on county lands somewhere else, they're buying-
No, they're trying to find suitable property in town. And, uh, at one time it was along Thirty-Fourth Avenue, they had an option out there, but they didn't feel it was centrally located enough to be functional with their project, so.
So would this go on our one to five-year plan for budget stuff? Or does this go on longer than five years?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's their, that's their call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But just, we, we need-
We gotta plan if we're gonna be buying a building or not, so, and that's a, that's a bigger thing, that's like a-
Exactly.
Well, that's, that one is similar to the county resource billing in some ways. And of course, the element of fairness comes into play. Uh, city gets first offer on that. And I suppose if we don't like their offer, then what we said of that, I suppose we could sell it to a restaurant or somebody. Uh, but the same thing, we hear we got a gated thing in a building in there, you hold them hostage, uh, inside that gated area. And, but it's a matter of fairness to the people that you're dealing with. Hopefully, we're treated as we would treat them. South Brookings Drainage, well, right now, uh, Larry, would you say that we're waiting for- To come, yeah, to come forward or something. They heard all the problems, that there's more problems than there are solutions, and I think, and I haven't talked to-
The way it was left, I think, uh, it almost looked like the landowner could probably do more drainage options than if we went in as a-
As a group. So-
So I don't know what, I don't know what direction they went, I haven't had a chance to talk to any of them.
Yeah, I haven't either, I thought about that the other day, calling Mark and, but it was left with the balls in their court, um, is where it's at. And we're waiting for a state watershed, uh, potential drainage ordinance as well. They did a test, they're going to do a test area. And so we haven't gotten very far on that.
No, are we part of that?
No, we are not.
Well, because it's in that back top northeast corner of our county, isn't it?
No.
I think it's Red River.
I thought that snuck-
John Wick is, is, is up in his, in Grant County.
Right, but I was thinking that it came and took the very northeast corner of our county.
I think that's the Minnesota and the Red River's the one that they're doing, isn't it?
Okay, okay, cause that's where- Well, because that, we were at, at legislature and said, did you know Brookings County's gonna be in this study and you're gonna have to come up with some money? And I was like, hold on a second.
That was said, I asked around, that was a no.
Okay, I didn't wanna make sure, so, all right, good.
So the pilot's in the northeast corner? I thought it was-
But, but I did talk to Representative Wick and asked him to keep us apprised of how things were going up there, so that we were at least in the loop a little bit.
Cause it, there was talk that they would, they would-
Class, or class water tower.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Where they have different classes, class one, we considered class one, yeah.
On the board.
On the board.
Yeah. The, the political battles, uh, that, everything starts so simple, but when it comes down to-
So the, the question I see for us is, are we going to look at our own drainage ordinance? Does that fit in with this category here? Or, or are we waiting? I mean, that's the decision, is it not? Are we going to go back to having our own drainage ordinance? Or are we going to wait and see what happens with the state?
Well, in my opinion, I'd like to see us have a drainage ordinance. I never was in favor of just letting that go. It was fine with me to rewrite it, but everybody else seems, you know, all the counties seem to want to wait and see what the state comes up with. But personally, I think local control is better, but-
I, I've asked around a little bit about it and, you know, I don't know if sure if we'll all agree in the ordinance, but, or its implementation, but it, basically, it's gonna end up back in court anyway, no matter what you do. If you decide against somebody, either way, one side of it, it's gonna be in court. It's back for you guys, you know?
I don't know. I don't, not necessarily. And, and we did, without, without having anyone go to court, when we were a drainage board.
I can't, I can't-
I would-
That's likely to go to court.
Where it's worth the money to going to court, probably, it's-
There won't be anybody-
It's different, like, you go into Minnesota or North Dakota, you have these large county drainages, they call them, and they're governed, county governs that drainage and whatever comes into it, I mean.
That's one thing that surprised me is the infrastructure that Iowa and Minnesota have for their drainage that we have none of. I shouldn't say none, but very little of. And that's, that's, you know, so when somebody wants to put drain tile in Minnesota, uh, they've been, been there, done that, and this is where you go with it. And you're able to do it, you apply to it and said, okay, fine. And they've handled that. We don't have those places available for people to do it. And, and that seems to be the biggest problem because it goes to the next property owner. It doesn't go into a, a county-owned system that has the ability to get rid of it. And, and that's the biggest problem. And, and again, still, doesn't have a good answer, uh, unless, unless somebody, some entity wants to step up and start providing that infrastructure at a humongous cost. Um, but otherwise, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be what, even our tax thing, we talked about the drain tile draining on somebody else's property, you know?
So the, we, every now and then we talk about what citizens say. There are two things that I get citizens' comments on, and they both have the same outcome. Um, people say, the county, the commission just didn't wanna deal with drainage and it's not right that we don't have a drainage ordinance, and I hear that. The other thing is, and this'll come up, I guess, through the comp plan eventually, is that the county commission should be hearing those appeals on, from, uh, planning and zoning instead of it going to circuit court. So our elected officials are making a decision, the final decision when there's a dispute. Those two things, and it looks to citizens that we deal with those two issues in the same way. That our commission has made some decisions in the past to eliminate any controversy coming in front of them. And maybe, maybe that is the position that we take. But I think that is a philosophy that we need to be sure that we're comfortable with.
And speaking to the drainage, I think that's exactly what, what the board at that time had in mind, with the exception of me. I, well, Deanna voted against dumping that also, but the men, all voters.
Well, it, it also comes down to, are we, we know what we're talking about with drainage and we're making the decision based off of what? You know, we don't have a hydrologist, we're making decisions off of where the water's going and how does it have an effect without professionals giving us input. And I don't know, um, you know, and if I have the facts in front of me, I think I can make a decision. But the problem is, is you don't have any facts in front of you. All you have are two landowners that are both equally upset about something, that think they should be able to do it. But yet, we have no, we don't have a hydrologist, we don't have any of that type of stuff. So, I certainly understand that, if I'm sitting here, I'm not gonna be comfortable making a decision if I don't have the facts in front of me. And the facts aren't, you're mad and you're mad, those aren't facts, those are emotions. And so if we don't have that type of stuff, it's not easy to make the decision, and I can understand that.
That's not necessarily how, we did have facts. We had, we had data. Every decision we made, we were provided with data as to how, what effect our decision would-
From Bob, is, uh, from, who would, who would provide that?
No, banners provided us with data. Um, yeah, yeah, different, yeah, different. So it, we didn't just blindly make decisions.
I know, obviously, but, you know, I just don't, I, I don't wanna get into a situation here where I have to be judge and jury when I don't have any type of information in front of me here.
But you would have. I mean, we, we, nobody could make a do, I mean, none of us were drainage experts. You have to have data from people who are.
Right, every one of those situations is different.
Yes.
Both of them are mad and well, maybe both of them left half.
Exactly, it's just like the culverts on Sinai. You know, that was a six of one and half a dozen of the other by the time it was done, but it worked, so.
So what am I hearing? Do we wanna leave the state watershed behind? Uh, something to think about, by the way, you guys were bringing up Minnesota and Iowa. Uh, cities in Iowa are suing the drainage boards for nitrates in their water. And in state of Minnesota, the southwest one just got rung up for ninety percent of the bodies of water cannot support aquatic life. And, um, so, I, I, I guess I went and run over there, thinking you're going to lawsuit.
True, you know, that's a good point.
And that brings us back to something that I've said in the past. We should have a hydrologist with all the water issues we've got. We should have a hydrologist and, and maybe that would be something we could look at. Um, and maybe the city possibly would be interested in splitting the expense for that.
Put one on retainer.
But, but, yes, or something.
Yes.
We should have access to an expert that could answer those questions for us. So if we have another dairy issue, we could have our person present a staff report that was based on science, that'd be great.
Back on whether we're gonna do something, would a couple of you be willing to lead the charge in making a proposal that the commission can pick away at and approve or reject or add to or subtract?
Well, I guess here's, here's my thought, is I'm, I'm more of somebody that wants to do something rather than sitting and waiting for somebody else, and we've already done that for two years and they're not coming through. So, um, we could sit and wait and wait and wait. I think we gotta start moving forward and, and I at least think maybe with the research. So what I, I guess what I would like to see would be the first step, that we get our old drainage plan in front of us, we get some of the surrounding people that have drainage plans and we start discussing it. Um, and we come across and we look at, see if we can find something that we're all happy with, that we could work with, make some decisions, but, you know, I, we've, we've waited for the state, state's gonna do a pilot, that, you don't even know where that's gonna go. We could sit here for ten years waiting for somebody else and I don't think that's what they want from us. So, I think we should start it, put it on the list and see if we can start discussing what's currently available. Okay.
And I think Commissioner Miller is-
Woody County has a great plan that works well for them.
It's in our, one of our packets.
For them, but they have different situations too. That's the whole thing, is that's why I think we need to look at all that stuff and, and massage it to our, because we can be flatter, we can, you know, they can have, you know, more containment to their, their river system than we do. There's a lot of different types of things that can happen there, so. Um, but one thing that does concern me is what's going on in Minnesota. Cause that's the last thing I wanna do, is have the lakes not be able to produce because of high levels and that you can't eat the fish or you can't fish because they're not surviving, they're not reproducing, that's the last thing I wanna see happen here, so.
It was in the, been in the Tribune quite a bit, um, I don't have any right now. Um, I guess what you're hearing there, Stacy, is that one's gonna stay on our work agenda. And ask Bob to begin preparing the old ordinance and gathering some research. Would we ask Bob to give us recommendations based upon his research or how do you wanna do that?
And it'd be nice if he addressed those issues and when he gives us, that you're talking about Minnesota and Iowa. It'd be nice to know what's happened other places.
Of course, that, that's in reference to that they have these regional-
Right.
Yeah, not, not county-wise.
Again, that may not even-
Apply, cause it's not county-wise.
I think it would be ignorant for us not to see what's going on. It's something that has a, a major drainage- Somebody that has a major drainage system, and the problems that they're encountering.
Somebody that's less than fifty miles from us.
Okay, so that one's still alive. Back to life, we're, we're not gonna wait anymore. IT, security and services.
I'm, I'm sorry, is it just Bob, or was there gonna be a commissioner on that?
I, I left it with Bob, how do you wanna do that?
I think we should all sit down and look at it first, sit down with Bob, and we can all discuss it.
Have him gather the information and send it to us.
Whether it's another, again, another work session, discussion, or something, but.
Bob did this once.
Perfect, then we shouldn't take very long.
Yeah. Well, is it Bob or Richard? Is it Bob or?
Probably be Richard now.
Yeah.
But we did get all this information, he sent us all the.
I know I read it.
Yes.
Could, could part of that be to look at if there's a way that we could, um, contract, like, like Commissioner Miller said, for the services of a hydrologist that maybe could help us with some of these issues?
I think that's a great idea. What, I, I think, and I, I can't imagine that the city wouldn't be interested in going with us, but maybe not. But I, I think if we could put a hydrologist on retainer, and, and let them help us with this, because we don't know.
Stacy, can you look, see where there's hydrologists?
I think that's a good place to start, because I wouldn't know where to look.
Well, doesn't Banner have one?
No. They hire somebody.
No, what's his name, Johnson?
Oh, Kansas Hydrologist.
And that's who gives us, that's who gave us the information that we had when we made decisions on those types of things.
Kent was very involved in the decision process that went into putting the culverts in Sinai.
Oh, okay.
First district might have some input on that.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, too.
I'll find out what it costs, too.
You could put out a request for proposals, too, uh, for a hydrologist. You might find out what companies are willing to contract that, you know, that they may be willing to say, is that okay for a contract with this company? We have a hydrologist, and you, they can do the work, and retainer fees fifty thousand dollars a year. And then we'll, we'll then bill you on a, something like that. So, I mean, there might be a request for proposal for a hydrologist. We might be able to get different areas and different people.
I mean, that's the way we had Banner, I mean, Trent or Johnson.
Kent.
Decisions is just advice, so, yeah, still, you still gotta decide.
Yeah. Yeah, he said, if you do this, this will happen, if you do this, this will happen. And that's how we made our decisions.
Okay.
And was he right?
Yes.
Perfect. I like that.
So, besides staying, keeping on the, uh, plugging away at this, and keeping it, saving it for another, we got Bob preparing information, which he already has done. We studied it, we'll meet with Bob, look into RFPs for hydrologists, which would include Banner and whoever, yeah. Okay. Eight, IT security services. I did see Sean, and he showed me a whiteboard full of things he was working on. And he probably made a part of a presentation in your sheet, right?
Yes. In the plan that I submitted to you, um, the technology needs is, are things that Sean has put together.
And that's under yours?
That would be my plan. For Commission Department.
You know, this particular item, I'm wondering if we should incorporate into that, is the website a technology department issue, right? Isn't on our strategic plan some things with our website, shouldn't that be included in this number eight? And I'm looking for my copy of the strategic plan, and I'm.
The strategic plan. Discusses the website at some point. Can't remember where. Right here, goal five, objective three.
Should those parts of our strategic plan go into this number eight on our works plan?
Absolutely.
One thing, too, along the lines with the website, Michelle and I looked at on, um, oh, the end of last week, was Civic Plus, who does our website, also has now an app. Because honestly, most of the people that, when you look at anything up on the internet anymore, so many people are using their smartphones, and there's an app for, um, cities, counties, that you can click on this app, and it will take you to different areas that have the website content, but it's, you click on different icons within this app. Um, that connects you then to the website that has what you need. It's another feature, and I know that's part of the strategic plan to move forward with, you know, the, the text alerts, that kind of thing. This is something that people could download, you know, for free. It's not free to the county to create the app, but, um, just something to think about, too. It's another, when you look at our website now on a smartphone, it's, it's pretty hard to maneuver around on it. This app would, um, is, we saw a little demonstration of it, and I can get you some more information on it, too. But it's, uh, it's pretty neat.
So we could add, I mean, some of this has already been taken care of, obviously.
Right.
And, but we do need something on our IT, and, and adding in what's in our strategic plan, and then should we be setting some deadlines, and asking maybe Sean to tell us some things?
Well, uh, uh, my, my thought, first of all, on that website, but when smartphones first came out, I was at a seminar, and they said, first thing you gotta do is change your website, because it's gotta work for smaller devices. And I think a lot of people did that. But rather, are we looking to hire out? I don't know Stacy's ability, but I think most people hire out. There's website designers and plans.
That's who we, we do now. Civic Plus is the, our.
And, and did we?
We, but we don't contact them every time.
Are we happy with them? I mean, there's all kinds of these.
So is our website, is that something you do, or is that something the IT department does? Who's responsible for our website?
Michelle keeps up with the content for the most part on it, but Sean is involved with that as well.
But the design of it, and, and fluid, and the ability to negotiate it is usually done by, Ryan, I don't know, you guys probably don't do it, you hire somebody out to do your website, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, most people do, and maybe, are we satisfied with who we got? Do we want somebody else to do it, if we're dissatisfied? If they haven't suggested to us to redesign our website to work off a smartphone, that's negligence on their part, I mean.
It does work off a smartphone.
Not as well. I mean, that's the purpose of it, is to have it work.
Do we have a contract, then, with some entity that maintains our website? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, because we contact them regularly, if things, if things aren't working on the website.
Our website was just redone in the last two years, wasn't it?
Right, seemed like when I first got here.
I think it was done in twenty thirteen, I wanna say, and.
Where are they out of?
I'm not sure, well.
Could they come to a commission meeting?
Manhattan, Kansas.
Oh, I was gonna say, could they come to a commission meeting and say, you know, we, we could make these kind of changes to your website if you'd like, or maybe they don't have to do that at a commission meeting. Maybe we could do an AV thing with them, or, or whatever, to cut down costs. But if, if we have a website designer, maybe we should talk to them.
Well, I think part of the thing we were talking about is the use of these text alerts, and E-alerts, and interactive communication tools for the counties for, I don't know, nine-one-one system they're talking about now, and all that stuff, being able to be compatible with, with those types of systems. Because we had a big, our meeting at, for nine-one-one, was talking about updating the whole system to where people can get on their phone and find where, uh, you know, there's a, um, resuscitation unit, and, or who has the ability to, you know, to help somebody. And those types of things that would come up. And, and they were just also talking about the alerts that can come from that nine-one-one, that can go to people on their phones. And then there should be a way for us to, on our county website, to work through that, so somebody in the outline, on a lake fishing, can get an alert saying, there's a storm heading this direction, and, um, and have that ability.
And there's, actually, you can do that now. You can sign up for text alerts, for weather, for, for various things through our website now.
Yeah. One thing I think, uh, you know, our strategic plan is, is lacking, having gone through a couple of other ones here recently, again, in different organizations I'm in, is after each goal, is who the responsibility is assigned to, and a timeline. Um, we did some timeline stuff at the beginning, but these later goals were like, okay, who's goal five, customer service, we have these three objectives. Who's responsible for them, and when do we want them to get done? And that's one thing we don't have on here. And we added that to a couple of our other ones that we did, that would help provide people that know it was their responsibility, and when they need to get done.
Well, can I talk about putting that into a work plan? And then having the, the, the task, who's responsible for it, and when's it, when's it gonna get done?
And I guess as we're talking about the strategic plan, that's the second comment, we want that template, and maybe we wanna think about that for next year. And I'm just wondering if Stacy can keep a running list of things we wanna discuss next time we update our strategic plan, because we'll do that next spring again. So, maybe we could, when we make change next year, we could do that.
Back to, well, we got website, what about replacing equipment and things like that? You wanna go with the recommendations there, or do you wanna look at, or what do you, what do you wanna do with it?
Where, where are we on?
Well, we're still in the IT. Well, first of all, what do you wanna do with the website? You wanna stay, stay with who we're with, or? Do you wanna take proposals from other companies? Do you want Stacy to research? Maybe there's people that deal in county governments, and maybe that's where this one came from, they specialize in it?
This, this Civic is a specialized in county government websites, right?
And part of this was with the broadcast of the meetings, getting that onto the website. You know, they worked, there was only certain.
It's not just an easy task to just change the website.
Yeah.
It's not, and they spent, I know, I wasn't in that department at the time, but I know they had many, many, many hours spent on it, and it cost between thirty and forty thousand dollars to, to do this, and this, it was two years ago.
So the contract that we have, it's an ongoing contract, and they do stuff for us throughout the year?
Yes.
Could you send us a copy of the contract?
Yes, I'll get that.
And then, and is there anything as relates to updates and that kind of thing in our contract? I guess we'll know that, but once we see the contract, then we can decide. Maybe the rest of you know what's in that contract, but what services we have that maybe would cost us so much money this year, as we're looking at doing some updates? Because what are they doing under the contract for us this year?
Right, yep.
Okay, and as far as the IT issues, we'll bring that up during budget time, or when we discuss Stacy's, uh, work, uh, at, at another time.
Well, and I think that's, he's given us a good, Stacy and, you know, and our IT have given us a good idea of potential costs and stuff down the road to replace these servers, and different things like that. So I, I think, I'm happy with what we've got here to be able to have this discussion.
All right. Don't nine and ten go together, Leanne?
I was gonna suggest that those two should be combined, because that is part of the comp plan. And maybe the two, it should just be called the comprehensive plan and, and.
Yeah.
Ordinance changes that will flow from that.
Yeah, right. It's really comprehensive plan following plans, owning ordinances.
Exactly. And that's moving along, and we're just waiting for First District to give us our first written copy of it, and then we'll start talking again.
When will the commission see something?
I would say, this is a guess, okay? Luke Mueller told us, um, last Friday, that it'd probably take them six weeks before they're done with that first draft.
And then they see it.
And, and then they're gonna bring it back to planning and zoning, and we're going to get to go through it. And then once we're through it, then it'll come to the commission.
So then, after that?
Then I think the commission would see it.
Okay, so it's out there, always.
Yeah. Not till summer, for sure.
Anybody else?
Sean, too, if you wanna, just going back to the IT stuff.
Thank, thank you.
Uh, Sean is in the back, and if you had some other questions for him, he could come out and answer some things, too, but.
I don't think we need to deal with that until we get going through our strategic plan.
Okay. So we got a comp plan update, we're gonna rename that, and that, that thirty-five acres is gonna be in there. Newson Complaints, and I don't know how that ever got, I don't remember. I know we got some that they're thinking of taking action on in June. I heard rumor, a long time ago.
And Bob and Abby and I met on those. We talked about what to do next on each one, and then I don't think I ever heard anything more. So I don't know the status on those.
Need an update from Bob.
Yeah, need an update from Bob, okay.
I'm guessing that Richard will be taking that over.
Some, sometimes, we just have to file a complaint.
County Development Office will make an update. Okay. You didn't start with a cough. Vote Center Options, um, well, it's coming up, um, a year from now.
Have we heard anything from anybody lately?
During the election.
Yeah, it, it's a, a top-of-mind situation, yeah.
And I think we should explore having a vote center, an SDSU.
But I think, to me, I'd put the burden on them. We give a list of criteria, which he's very well aware of.
And that's the problem, is, for as much as, as they want it and think a spot is perfect, there needs to be a certain amount of criteria that are involved with them. Like, is it available no matter what? We can't get bumped. Is there adequate parking, and all that kind of stuff? And so, you know, you know, that was the question, was, was there a place that you can get all this? And it would be close, you know, place to it. And, and, and the problem was, yeah, student union would be great, we can't get parked. And as far as SDSU kinda keeps pushing everybody to a, a walking type of campus, rather than a driving campus, you're gonna have to be on the outskirts somewhere to be able to drive to it.
They don't want it on the outskirts.
And then we hear that, that's too far. I still think Performing Arts PAC is the best place to have it. If we could get a commitment from the PAC that they, we get these dates, and that's it.
They don't want it there. Student body does not want it at the PAC.
Why?
I gave you the reasons.
Too far away?
Yeah, that was one.
It is out of the loop of what, everything, everything's in that center, a union wellness center.
They want it in the union, that's where they want it.
Yeah.
Exactly, so it's a moot point.
Well, I, I would say, how about a letter? Of course, it doesn't make good, the students are taking their tests, going home, but. Well, I kinda like saying, here's our criteria, we're more than willing to work at, you guys find something. I'd send a letter to the administration, and one to the Student, um, Association. And they gotta, next fall, when the students come back, and Students Association, they can wrestle with it. But they got the criteria, and we're willing to listen. But I think it's picking a spot for them is uphill battle.
No, but I like the idea of sending a letter to the Student Association, the administration, saying, this is an issue that came up in the last election, we're willing to explore the possibilities, these are the concerns we've, we've got, we need a set date, we need, you know, we need parking, we need this. And would you have some suggestions that we could look at?
Yeah, probably not worth sending till August, although I, maybe the Student Body Association meets during the summer.
The summer, send it.
The president and vice president does?
I'm sure.
Well, maybe we send that out sooner than later. Send that out sooner than later.
Do you want that to come from?
Commission.
Commission?
Mr. Wyse.
Yeah, just me.
Cause it was. Cause I, I talked to Caleb was the student body president.
They had, they had an election.
Did they?
Within the last, uh, within the last month. So I think there's somebody new now at the helm, but I'm not sure who that is. I can, it's easy enough to find out. The other thing to keep in mind.
Caleb was not here during the summer when, when he was the student body president.
The other thing to keep in mind too is, in the April election, the city and school opted to not use SwifTeL Center. They went with three locations, Holy Life Activity Center and Bethel Baptist. So, um, that's something else to consider too. I, you know, we, we did the four locations in November in town because we kept SwifTeL.
Did we get a lot of votes out at the SwifTeL Center? I can't remember.
SwifTeL actually picked up more in November than it had. I think the word kind of got out that that's the place to go if you don't wanna go to somewhere that's a little busier. So it actually did better than Holy Life, but Holy Life was a brand new location last fall too. So that's just something to keep in mind too. Especially if you're gonna add a location at SDSU. Do you eliminate one, another one?
Well, I'd say we cross that bridge when we get to it.
I agree.
Just food for thought.
Yep.
Leave it on there though?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna leave it on there and proceed with contact and tell them we're interested, but we need to see some suggestions. Sheriff's parking lot, I think we got this all figured out, don't we?
I think Marty told me that just maybe yesterday even that the hedge, a hedge got put in, so. Yeah, so that's moving.
Take it off.
You wanna remove that one?
Yep.
Yep. Union negotiations in the past, Elwin handled that for us, right? Is that correct?
She did, but she also hired an attorney. I have his name upstairs.
Okay.
Who handled it?
So the question.
Steve. Can't think of his name right offhand. I can't, I can't think of his name right offhand. I know I have it upstairs. I know I have it upstairs. What's that?
Hutter?
No, it started with a B. But anyway.
The question is how we wanna handle the next one.
And that's coming up. The, the current union contracts with highway and the sheriff are good through the end of 2016.
How far in advance do we normally start working on that?
Start working on those fairly early in 2016 because a lot of, if, if there's anything that affects budget, we need to know that by June, June. So we like kinda move, we like that to move forward sooner rather than later.
So, I'm sorry, I think I still didn't hear this. You said somebody handles that for us and there was an.
Stephanie handled it.
Oh, Stephanie handled it, okay.
So now we have a new situation and, and when we were going through the hiring process, the previous commission discussed and put it on there that we need to decide how we're gonna do this.
Need to hire, don't we, don't usually normally hire your attorney?
There is an attorney that we've used in the past for things, and I think Stephanie was the one actually who gave me his name. And that's the gentleman, I cannot think of his name right off the top of my head right now. I know I have it upstairs.
And these would be the issues and we would make a decision on where we wanted to be at with those issues and then they would negotiate it.
See, I don't remember meeting with the.
We didn't. It was Stephanie. But that's, we don't have Stephanie.
Right.
We, she didn't, Stephanie didn't come to us until she had talked to.
Everything.
The others. And then she came back to us and said.
Yeah. We never saw the attorney. Stephanie said, this is our options or what do you think we're.
This is what they want.
Yeah, well, this is what they want.
But we don't have Stephanie here, so we need somebody to make first communication to them.
Right.
And we need somebody on staff that's responsible for coordinating all that. Now, is that Stacy or is that Laura? Labor negotiations.
Oh, that's a good question.
I think Stacy.
But she didn't, she doesn't, she's not gonna negotiate for us. That's the whole thing.
Right.
Well, is she, isn't she?
One of ours, Art Paycheck.
Right. We need somebody that's watching the timeline, getting stuff together, making the contact with the attorney, doing all of that. Who does that stuff? Okay.
Laura's a good question too. Talk about.
Well, and I can visit with her too to see if she has any suggestions if she's ever dealt with this in the past. So we'll work together on that.
That's a great idea. I think a little more research there.
Yeah.
Will Laura come in and more of a? You had an issue, you know what I mean?
I think so too.
You know, if you had a labor issue or, you know, where she would give her expertise up, everything was handled correctly. Not negotiating wages, I mean.
But what I heard said is that none of our staff are gonna negotiate the wage settlement, whoever that attorney is that we hire, right?
Right.
We just need somebody.
Lawyers, I mean, we're gonna be the final say of the weight.
Uh huh.
Yeah, we need that.
Uh huh.
What we do is, yeah, we, we get that information, then we bring it back to you in an executive session, discuss that, take that back, you know, so.
But we need to have our timeline and somebody watching that.
Right. And get that moving forward next year. Yep. Yep.
Very good. We've reached the end.
But do we need to take and now look at our strategic plan and put those things in that are missing off of here?
I think so.
Sorry.
How'd you wanna state what you said again?
I, there are things that are on our strategic plan that we're supposed to be doing that are not on here. And I just think those things now need to flow over into this work plan, right?
Well, now, that's the next, yeah, we're going to a work plan. You mentioned strategic plan. I'm trying to get it clear in my mind. We've got this, we've got strategic plan, we've got work plan, we have work session. And what we just did there, by the way, we got slightly criticized by going through this list every meeting. Because they felt like the public should know that we're gonna talk about one or the particular one. So, so I'm open to what you want to do at this point.
I'd like Stacy to put the strategic plan up on, on this board because I can't have two things on my screen at one time. And could we just, it won't, I don't think it'll take long. Let's just look and see which things we don't have on this list.
I think she worked partial up that had dates. I print everything out.
So that goal number one, we're going to do as part of our budget stuff, right? The capital improvement plan and all that, that's, so that'll be all in our budget stuff. And we don't have to put that on our study session stuff. Is that, am I correct on that?
Correct.
So we're done with number one. And I didn't see on our, on our list here of what we're working on, anything about highways and bridges in our priority lists and how we're preparing for the new change in the law and doing that. Maybe that needs to be on this work session list.
Cause I think that was, we were, this work session was kinda gonna be talked about long-term. We were gonna work on goal one to try to get that prepared for the budget process. And, and I, I think that's part of it too, that, I don't know if that, I don't know if that should be a separate thing rather than a budget thing. It's probably a good idea. As part of the master transportation plan, probably something part of that, wouldn't it be? So do we need to add a work topic that says, update master transportation plan and create improvement process list type of thing?
Yep, those priority bridges and roads.
Geez, I can't hear so much coffee. Now what?
It's a sad deal.
It is. I think we should adjourn.
Jenna, are you getting all these coughs in the minutes? Jensen coughed, Wyse coughed.
Continuing to cough.
Followed by Pierce. Miller.
Miller can't hear.
Miller is gay. My gosh.
No, I, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Pierce there. You know, I, this, that is, we need it for budgeting, you know, that type of stuff and what we're gonna do. But we also need a separate thing, plan, replacement bridge plan, or something that we're ready to go when, when they release the rules for that, for that funding. So I think we should add that on there and.
Maybe move that up toward the top of, eventually we're gonna prioritize this, right?
And Dick has it. And that's why he asked us about being here today. He's ready to go. So we just need to call the other session and get them in here and do that. Yeah.
So we're, did I, is, we're putting that onto our work session topics list?
Yep.
Great.
As far as the training opportunities, I saw that a lot of people were putting in travel training and stuff for their department heads and stuff. Are we just gonna use that as our reference or? How do we, what are we gonna implement? Do we need to do anything or do we let department heads just?
I think we let the department heads train their people. Send their people to the trainings.
Unless we hire somebody that we deem that needs extra training.
Right, like we did with weed.
And the only, the only thing on all of that goal number two that I think we need to do something on, and it isn't something we need to do. I'd just like to have a report that the employee handbook has been reviewed and we're doing this or that or something. You know, so we know that it's done and whether there were any recommended changes.
Be nice, be nice to have that.
They don't do that annually though, do they?
No, just when there are major changes. And Laura and I have discussed that we wanna go through that, that handbook basically with a fine tooth comb and, and make some needed changes. We just haven't had time to do that yet. It is, it's, it's on our to-do list for sure. So, and when that happens, we'll bring that back. The board approves those changes and then it'll go back and we'll get copies, updated copies to all employees who'll then sign off that they've received the handbook.
But that doesn't need to be on our work session stuff.
Well, again, I think our work session stuff, you know, again, if we went and put what department's responsibility and when, we would know what we need to have in our work plan. Because there, you know, there is the very first part of this, if you go down to the beginning there, is we gotta provide, we gotta put together a capital improvement plan. That's our job and that'll be one of our work session points. But like even the master transportation plan, you know, and following that, we're, the highway department will be the main portion of that. But even like if you do the training, we put department heads, we do the training options and stuff like that, and that's an annual basis. But redoing the manual would be HR and commission assistant done by end of the year.
Right.
And so it wouldn't be us again on there. It would be their responsibility to do that and they know what their responsibility for the year is. So, I don't know if we need to do that or not. I know we did it in other ones and it definitely helps the people that are needing to do the work. They know that they need to have it done.
But I think rather than changing this plan that we've already spent a lot of time on and adopting, we just keep that on our list of changes to make for next year.
Yeah, I think so too. And that's, that was my thought. That's what I was kinda fighting with, is do we do that now even though we know we need it? Or do we just move forward with it the way it is and do it next year? That's fine too.
Because we'll be working on it, we're in May now, we'll be working on it in seven months. What about number three? Goal three.
Well, I think that's where our emergency management person, goal three, right?
Yeah, can you, there we go.
This is where I think again, we turn around and this is where our emergency management director is responsible for this. And this is an annual, annual type of thing.
And there's nothing there that needs to be on our work session because he's on top of all that, I think.
Exactly.
Talking goal three.
Yeah.
Objective two though discusses the detention center. Objective one is all emergency management stuff, but objective two is sheriff.
And I wondered where we had, I said, I think we took off the thing about the parking lot, but I wondered if that shouldn't be in there, the detention center stuff. That might be a work session topic, but maybe it's not the high priority one this year, but maybe that should be on our list.
The detention center?
Just throw that out.
Well, okay. Couple thoughts. Well, first of all, do you remember, Leanne, at our meeting here and that one guy said it was the sheriff, it was the ultimate? I did look it up and I got all the South Dakota qualified law and I gave it.
Sheriff was the ultimate what?
Emergency management. Remember I had that question? And it's not. It's in statute. I got the statutes for him. That was the fellow from the university. But, well, concerning this detention center, I think we really need to have a serious discussion. That back to having focusing one meeting on this. I was gonna ask Marty, but I started thinking, and we talk about regional, we've been at some meetings regional. Who goes to a regional? People waiting trial? That seems inconvenient. People that have work here? That seems inconvenient. Is there two kinds of detention center? People serving jail time and those waiting for trial and are, I mean.
No, I think, I think what our, our regional jail is, and in some ways, we are a little bit of a regional jail right now. And in more ways, Cottington County might be a regional jail right now.
Yes, oh, they are, yeah.
Because what the regional jail does is provide detention facilities for those counties that don't have them. And we are surrounded by counties that don't have any detention centers. So, but yeah, they, if somebody is held without bond, they're sent to that regional place. Or if they're sentenced to serve jail time, county jail time, they're sent to the regional jail.
Well, I, I agree totally, but there's been discussion about regional jails between bigger counties as with the state chipping in. And I'm starting to think, how in the hell does this work? When you got people waiting for trial and, you know, and I, I.
Did you say with the state chipping in?
Huh? Well, that, they, there was some talk about it, but talks cheap. But I'll tell you, I went and looked at a remodeling project next to our property here. And I asked the people doing the work, and they're spending a gajillions on this. I says, God, it's a lot of money for this place. Yep, just prevent the county from buying this area. And if we expand, are we gonna build a three-story unit where we're at? We're gonna be like Sissons, they do video time and you spend, run a shuttle every day from the courthouse out to the edge of town. These are the kinds of things that.
All issues we'll have to discuss.
Yes.
Those are going to be.
And video is the next part of it.
I will tell you, in Cottington County, they don't bring the jail people over to, to court. It's all done video.
Hundred percent.
Pretty much. They have a room that they use that has, I wanna say ITV, but I'm not sure. I think it's ITV that's set up there. And all the courtrooms in our circuit now have ITVs. So you might be having a bond hearing, well, when I did magistrate court in Cottington County at ten o'clock, we did ITV hearings with the jail. And we did all those people held over there. And the jail is, was like twenty feet from the courthouse, wasn't very far. But then they didn't have the security issue with hauling those people over and, and all of the things that are related to that. And I think probably that is the future. But also what happened is, you know, the county pays to transport prisoners. Now with the ITV system, let's say you had a person that's being held in Lake County for some reason and you needed to have a bond hearing in Cottington County for that person, you did it through ITV and they weren't hauled. Or if it was somebody in the penitentiary. Or if it was somebody in the penitentiary and you needed to do a sentencing, although felony sentencing still was, had, two years ago was not yet approved by the Supreme Court for ITV, so I don't know where that's at. But a lot of those felony hearings from the pen were being held ITV. Juvenile stuff can be ITV, there's a lot of ITV. But you're right, it's hauling those prisoners back and forth, and I just think that's a bad solution. But we'll have that conversation when we get to the detention center issues.
And then I guess the question is, is to, and people have to be held overnight, you're not gonna take them to that regional facility that night. We gotta have, still have to have a place here.
I, I, I don't think anybody is proposing that Brookings County participate in a regional detention center somewhere else. We're, we become a regional detention center. Yeah.
Good.
That, that's, I think that is what the, the thought is when somebody mentions regional detention centers. Is that would we wanna be housing more prisoners for other counties, because we can make some money and pay for our facility doing that.
If you can, my experience, the experience with running jails isn't good.
No, no.
Track record isn't good.
It's not.
My question is, is then, what about Watertown though? I mean, if they have a regional jail and we have a regional jail and we're forty-five minutes away, it's almost like, okay, why have two regional jails that close together? Why not have one? And that could be the case, that Watertown might be the place, and Sioux Falls has the place, and we don't, we're not the region.
And that would be the discussion that we could have.
Yeah, I would worry about the trial itself, it's one thing for arraignment and stuff, but, and for these, you know, I like people that go to jobs. I think there was eight out of the.
I myself think, but I understand those will be issues we'll discuss, that we have too many people to send our people somewhere else. But that's. I think it would cost us too much.
Well, anyway, uh, so that, that's still.
If that's the case, then what, we have too many, we have too many jails that are being regional too close together, right? So then, we shouldn't even be thinking about a regional facility. We're thinking of handing on our own.
Possibly. I, I mean, those are.
Because if Cottington's doing it and they're thinking about building, then they're gonna get all the counties around us that don't have any, because that's what they're gonna build for, unless we build it before them, you know? But I'm not sure we wanna race to do that. It seems like if that's gonna be the regional facility where they're gonna take care of six, eight counties around them, we're gonna be right up against them. Why not worry about taking care of our own and keeping it there, because we have too many to give to them and too many to give to Sioux Falls.
And, and that's a conversation we should have with the sheriff and see what his thoughts are, but.
And if it's a number scale, you know, you only got this many bed facility, you can only contract with this many different counties to come here, you know, you gotta be able to provide if needed.
I just don't wanna see us going through a whole thing, and then all of a sudden Watertown builds a huge one-hundred-and-twenty-bed facility, and we're looking at building an eighty-bed facility. And there's not enough really prisoners to go around, because they, and now we're in a bidding war with Watertown to say, hey, hey, we'll take your prisoner for this, because we need to fill it up. I, I don't wanna be in that situation either.
But I don't think that's a conversation for today.
No, no.
Do you want that added to the work session topic? Detention center?
Detention center.
Anything else added to it, no?
Can I make a small suggestion, and maybe you guys have it clear in your mind already? I think work sessions is a place and time, a work plan is a document. And really, we should have a work plan, and this goes back to the topic, who and how and when. And then we should be having a work plan, and what we're doing, talking about it, is a session, it's more of a.
But isn't this list we're putting together a work plan?
I hope so. That would be my goal.
We can rename it.
But the only other thing too is, just.
Wait, the word work session and work plan gets interchanged.
It's confusing.
I like to.
And that brings up a point that you brought there, you know, is I don't even know if I want the local regional detention center to be on our work plan. Because you know, this is a long-term five to ten, and we may not even be ready to discuss a local regional detention center at all. Could just sit there and say, oh, we're just, we're not ready, we're not ready. So do we need on this plan, that, the colored one, do we need to have something that we're working on consistently, you know, monthly basis type of thing? And then the things that we're not, because we don't have to have everything on this, on our work plan, because again, this is meant to be a long-range plan. And right now, we're not ready to talk about detention center, because we just don't have the immediate need, we don't have the information, so we're not gonna put it on the work plan. And, and our work plan is only six, eight items, those are the things we're doing right now, and that kinda stuff. You know, that would be my thought a little bit on this, the work plan's a little more concise, a little more immediate, and this strategic plan is a little more wide and longer, and they don't have to have everything on there.
See, I've got them out there in two worlds, and mine, it's the short-term, long-term, and I would have a template, and I'd do it a little different now, I've been down the road, but we've been there. And for budgetary purposes, for planning ahead, for money.
Yeah, I, I think.
That's one, and the other is, there's things that need to get done, shows some of them cost money, but they just need to get done, yeah. And so I put detention center over here, if we have a discussion, we're worried about, we start setting some money aside. And, 'cause, you know, that thing's not gonna last forever now. The argument would be how long, five years, ten years, but, and do we put it all away, or do we bond a portion of it? You know, that's, that's a fair discussion, but that's money.
So you're saying that should be in the budget process as opposed to?
More of a budget process, more in the, in the, I call it the strategic plan, and this is work.
Okay.
That.
I agree.
All right.
Something that we're working on on a daily, weekly, monthly basis type of thing that we need some feedback on. When we're, when we're ready, turn around and say, okay, we've got a problem, we've gotta do something, and we've got two million that we've saved the last four or five years, then it goes on to the work plan then. Okay, now we need to hire somebody, we're gonna wait for, that type of stuff.
Okay.
Here we are.
Goal four, number one, we've got that on our list.
Well, that's, I think we've dealt with those.
We've got the drainage master, we have the drainage plan on our.
Mm-hmm.
Is the, goes back to the technology portion of the website, is that a work plan that we get, we have Stacy come back with some information on it?
Yep.
I think so.
She's working on it, so that's work.
Put it on the work plan.
Got it down.
And we'll be going through this strategic plan again in August, I see that next.
Is that what it is, August?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
You guys can do that while I'm at the rally.
Nope.
You're not calling in?
No.
So.
Now, the county liens portion of, I guess, on goal six there. And you had asked that beyond there and stuff like that, what's your thoughts on that?
I would propose that we talk about that in August, okay? Because then we'll be done with, we'll know where we're going with that, all this. I think our priority needs to be the new bill on highways and bridges.
Yeah.
And that's where we should be spending our time, and, and that we can talk about later.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I was bending down, you wanna talk about what in August?
County liens, the county lien process in, in.
We're not gonna put it on the work.
Yeah.
Which one, which one?
Bottom, uh, goal six, objective three.
Okay.
Very bottom.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Now, I want all of you sick people to go home and go to bed, so that you get healthy.
Well, before we leave. I want to put a little more thought into, first of all, would it be okay to change these to work plans and redesign them with some na, the topics and the names and timelines? What, just redesign it a little bit? And, and so, and I'd ra, rather call it a work plan.
Well, I thought we already agreed to do that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm putting it on Stacy to redesign it, and she can get rid of some of this old stuff. And then, what do you wanna do the very next meeting? And we don't wanna, we can have the work plan updated and sent to us, but we don't necessarily have to discuss it, because there was that criticism that.
Well, let's start, why don't we start?
Well, I thought we'd start with highway, one at a time.
I mean, we got.
At least, at least one.
Let's get that in order, so when the state comes off the rate, it's here we go.
That, that's exactly.
So on this list now, do you have fourteen items, how many items you got less left on that work plan?
Well, the initial one I had fourteen, but we took one off. Well, no, I didn't, because we combined nine and ten.
Yeah.
Because isn't the next thing we need to do is to prioritize those fourteen things? And say, this is where we're going to, how, how do we just? That's what I think, is we should prioritize those fourteen things. And I'd like to put highway and bridges number one.
I, we got that, I think we're on that.
Yep. I mean, some of these are things that we're not, the beta thing, we're not even gonna do anything with, so. Yeah, so that doesn't have to be, that could be low priority.
Do you wanna leave number four on there, the liquor license, I mean, that's rolling.
Yeah, I think that could come off.
Unless you want it to stay on until you've actually issued it. Because there is going to be a process.
Make us feel good, we cross one off?
Once the ordinance is, is done and established, then we still have to go through the process of advertising and issuing the license.
That's true.
So.
We'll leave it on.
It's up to you.
Leave it on, but move it to low priority.
Yeah, it'll ha, it's gonna happen right before our eyes, yeah. Is it good enough to have just the highway scheduled for next time? That's okay.
So schedule a work session just for highway.
Yep.
Yep.
We gotta figure that, where that's at. Or when?
Nineteen.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
And we just do that after our commission meeting, right?
What's that?
The highway thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Speaking of drainage, I should probably inform you, Larry and I have been in the middle of something rather interesting. And just to give you an update, on the north end, for, since I've been on the commission, I've heard about the SDSU re-diverting a creek up to the north. All into the ponds, all in through Sex Hour Park, and then at one time the water flowed to the west. I got pictures, I contacted Dean Calhoun at the emergency thing, he wasn't too interested in discussing it. I contacted the president, he said, get a hold of West Cheddar, and he first of all has the authority for us to go out and look at it. Because up to that point, you know, other than some pictures, we didn't know what we were dealing with. And to go out with Jeff Weldon, Larry and I, and go out and look at this thing. And, by the way, it's not in the county where that's at, it's in the city, so now, yeah.
Are you saying in Sex Hour Park? Oh, okay.
North of ponds, west of Midary. And then plus, the president said, west is into history. And so, after several contacts, I didn't get anywhere, ran into him at the bank, and he was, said, I've been meaning to get a hold of you. I don't know why you wanted to go look at it, because we admit it's there. And I said, well, okay, well, that's a step in the right direction, I guess, and we need to see whether higher hydro, not us, the city. And to find out, it would make any difference to allow the water to flow. By the way, they're working on the bypass Western Avenue right now, making it, cleaning it out, getting ready to get water that will only occur in an extreme flood. Normal flow doesn't exist, it's blocked. If we get a lot, a lot of water, it'll go up and over, everywhere up there it gets flooded, so it doesn't make any difference. But in a normal, half the water, or a third, should go around Brookings to the north, and then over by that lake or whatever it is. Kinda, if you ever take the angle diagonal, it goes that way. Well, so I, we shared emails, and I got one at ten-thirty at night, and they're not happy with the questions. And so, that's where it sits, I did ask the GIS people to, Jeff asked for some nice maps, they did the maps, it's in his court. To do anything he wants to do with these maps and gather information about this water. But I want you to know that my charming personality once again torques some people off. And that's, just trying to ask questions didn't pay off very good.
But it isn't, it, we're not involved in.
We're out of it.
We shouldn't ever have been.
Yes, the last GIS, uh, when we were looking at it, the city boundary did take in the part that's the problem. And just to the west, isn't. So it's all theirs, but you know, as, as I said in the email, any incorporated city that has a problem, I'm willing to try to help them as any citizen, including SDSU. You know, to facilitate cooperation between neighbors and governments. And that's where I left it, and, but it, since then, we now found out the boundary has shifted to the west, and that alleged, well, they admit it's there. The blockage is in the city limits, so.
And where exactly is it in the city limits again?
Well, if you're on Midary, look west, you're on the bypass, and you, you drive by those ponds, look straight north, it's up in there. Once you say Larry, that'd be about where it's at.
Just on the north side.
Yeah. It, it, you can't see it from the road, and that's why we asked to go out and look at it. Well, now they, they say, it's okay, it's there, so.
And it pushes the water where?
South, right into those ponds. And then the ponds, the ponds, it goes under fourteen and heads its way through Sex Hour Park into that area. Some of the water initially, in fact, on the GIS, there was an overlay, and it shows the water, some of it going to the west, and it heads over to the diagonal. And if you drive by there, you can see the indentation in the land, but there's no water there out by the diagonal, but that's. And then it headed over by the airport and rejoined. So it just split the water for a while and came back, but it got it out of, some of it out of the city, where there was more buildings and things like that. But I, I, I'm done with it, but it wasn't appreciated.
All right.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move in second, all in favor, aye? Oppose the other side, thank you very much.